Okay.
The fourth, right?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Oh my goodness.
When's uh, when start a little league at this rate?
September.
Oh gosh. Maybe, maybe August, September. We're gonna have a fall season of October. It's sad. I'm over it. Another month.
Where did Myra get to? This thing won't connect, it says it can't connect.
Turn on. Turn on the mics.
They found a use for the gavel. Might need a new computer. Here's his mouse. Mouse working?
My fingers don't. My fingers don't work.
Do you know what the problem was?
It wasn't on.
No, I robbed the mouse from my home computer and I had the one.
So it wasn't bad.
Whatever. Anyway, Debbie was happy. She couldn't run my computer.
She was sitting home running your computer.
No, that's gone. I don't see that short.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, no, I just had reaction.
Okay, just checking.
All right, it is exactly six o'clock and I will call this work order to uh, work order. Work session to order and uh, I will turn the floor over to you Jason and Tyrell. And uh, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. Thanks for letting us possess this this evening. We wanted to talk a little bit about the baseball field situation here in Rollins and kind of keep council up to date on where we are and what we've been doing. This evening, we do have Tyrell Perry, our parks superintendent. We have representatives of Little League here and I believe from the generals baseball team as well. So I think our goal tonight is to try to burn through this presentation and allow some time for some questions and answers if you'd like. The first half of the presentation is regarding the generals baseball, so maybe at the end of that, see if Trevor or anybody from there would like to come up and say anything. And then we'll move on to the little league, which is the VFW ball fields. So I guess to start, when I first started here, it's been two years now. I did inspections of all the parks and playgrounds and ball fields and everything and it was um, a little shocking the condition of our baseball fields in general. They were just in rough shape. And it's not to put anybody on blame, it's just it's a tough climate to grow turf and and it costs money to maintain ball fields and keep the infield mix up to speed and uh, our little rodents that tear up the fields are no help as well. But we quickly met, in fact, I think two months after I started, we had a volunteer workday with the generals. And I was super impressed. There was over thirty representatives from generals baseball between coaches, parents, board members, even players out there on a Saturday along with myself and I think four of our parks crew out there working on those ball fields, getting them ready for that season. So that was very, a great introduction to this community for me, seeing that that many people show up for a volunteer workday. So our parks crew quickly went to develop a plan on what we need to do to to basically bring these fields to where they need to be to make them safe and playable for our kiddos in Rollins. We, we started right away, we aerated the ball fields for the turf, we put, we fertilized the ball fields. We had to till up the infields because they hadn't been replaced with infield mix. And to give you kind of a basic overview, a good infield mix is a, is I guess for lack of better way of saying, it's a mixture of dirt, sand and clay. And what happens over the years, if you don't replace that, if you can imagine somebody dragging ball fields in the summer and they don't wet it down and you see the dust going up in the air, that dust is actually the clay that's necessary in that ball field. And the longer you do that without replenishing the clay, the tougher the field gets and it actually turns into concrete. And we saw firsthand the little league fields even last year. I'm not kidding you, you could play basketball out there. So it took us, our, I say us, this guy here and his crew with a rototiller, I'm sorry, like a tractor to rototill those infields and not just one pass. I mean, go this way, go that way, just to bust through that concrete like surface, which tells us we need to try to make some improvements, whether it be adding clay or just do it right and add infield mix. We did have a plan, the water restrictions the last two years did kind of put us on hold on a lot of what we want to do. We can't really apply seed or overseed the outfield areas. I will say that Little League, the turf area is in better condition than the sports complex, which is across the street from the rec center. That was built, I believe, on the desert floor. I mean, there wasn't really, you know, where I'm from, it's called topsoil here. Nobody knows what topsoil is, but you know. Exactly. So like a compost or something with some nutrients to help turf grow. So what Tyrell has a plan going forward is we need to top dress with good compost over time. And over the years, it'll, it'll put nutrients back into the soil. And that does two things, the grass likes it and the weeds don't. You know, good healthy, healthy nitrogen rich soil kind of weeds out some of the weeds and it also creates healthy turf. So that's a little bit of a background and we'll go through more as I go through this presentation. So I feel like we've done a pretty good job, the city developing partnerships really. It's a partnership with Little League and with the generals as well. Like we've said in meetings, the city can't take care of these fields on our own. And Little League and the generals can't take of the field, care of the fields on their own. So we're working together to do our best. We've had multiple inspections over the last couple of years, so we're on the same page and identifying what we need to do to make these improvements. So in 2021, so I'm gonna jump into the generals ball field. This is the sports complex across the street from the rec center. In 2021, we did a spring volunteer workday that I mentioned, we had over thirty volunteers show up and plus our parks crew. And then spring and fall of 2022, we did the same thing with volunteer workdays. Fall 2022, our parks crew went out and rototilled the infields and the warning tracks. And I'll say, for that brief moment that we didn't have snow on the ball fields, I don't know if you noticed Tyrell, but the warning tracks alone at the little league fields, our work that we did in the fall saved us a lot of time and effort this spring, which is when we're trying to go from snow to spring and play. And the more we have to do in the spring, we want to do as much as we can in the fall to get prepared for the spring, in other words. We also, when I say we, most of this is Tyrell and Little League and generals, but we installed a bleacher pad for away team bleachers. It was kind of on a funky hill for a while. Removed brush from the exterior fields and repaired holes in the outfield. And then, spring 2023, that's coming up, we're gonna, we have a volunteer workday already scheduled. We're planning on, we're gonna try to bring in a sports field expert to help with maintenance and trainings. If we can't get one to come in, we have the knowledge to do so as well. But I think what's best for us is for, for anybody that's gonna do any kind of maintenance on the ball fields, we need to do like a one hour maintenance seminar, so they're not raking the infield up onto the grass, which creates that mound. It also gets, you know, rock and sand into our sprinkler heads and then they get stuck on or down. And so it's just real simple maintenance that those volunteers and those parents and those coaches, so they have an understanding on how to properly maintain those fields. We're also gonna aerate all turf and fertilize this spring, if we ever get a spring. Also, we're gonna compost top dress all turf areas. Will, depending on the status from our heavy drag in the fall, we will do another drag. If it's necessary, we'll rototill it again. I'm hoping and thinking it won't and that we have a piece of equipment that has really solid tines that just, it's called a heavy drag and then we'll go through there. And then after that, throughout the season, we just have to, for lack of better word, you drag a fence basically behind the three wheeler or something so that you can drag the fields and prep for play. Tyrell and his crew is also gonna install new irrigation controllers and also apply pesticide where necessary. Also, our plan this fall, so we purchased infield mix for the generals baseball field. And um, our goal is to basically stockpile that for now, make sure it doesn't blow away. And then this fall, we're gonna hire a company to come in and laser grade the ball fields and apply that infield mix. And I talked to the parks director in Laramie and they've done about eight fields in the last few years with the same company and he's like, it's like brand new fields when they come in and are done with it. They fixed the lip for the transition between the infield and the outfield as well. And then if you can, if you've been out at the, the generals field, the sports complex and there's all that round rock that somebody put in there, I don't know how long ago, and it migrates everywhere and it doesn't stay in its place, we're gonna remove all of that and we're gonna put rotomill down and roll it and have a good, nice surface for people to walk on to get to concessions. And I think Tyrell and his crew is kind of excited because it's really nice rock. So we'll use it for landscaping and aesthetic values in other parks and green space areas. Compost top dress, I think we already talked about, we'll make repairs to the turf areas and aerate all turf areas as well. Oh, sorry, in the fall, so thank you. So, just went over spring, so this is fall. We're gonna compost top dress again, because again, we want to keep doing that, you know. I don't, do you know how much we'd put down roughly?
Probably do a couple inches in the spring, is kind of what we're shooting for. And then probably a couple inches again in the fall. And then they change. That's kind of what we're looking at to just impose some of that organic matter to our soils on those fields. Because they, they, like we talked about, they lack that topsoil. So we're trying to build that up and that helps. That compost will also help retain water when we do irrigate. And that'll just be huge to help heal those fields over the next few years.
Where, where are you gonna get the compost from?
That's coming from the Laramie landfill. They compost over there.
Makes me wonder, you know, this is not your project, but we should be doing that here. But the problems you run into is like if you use a herbicide and then I use your grass clippings and put it on my garden, I just killed my garden. So there has to be some control there, but it just kills me that we have to go get compost someplace else. And we have corals here, we have grass here, we have, anyway, just a thought. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, and I think the city has looked into it. There is some uh, you know, labor requirements and you gotta water and you gotta turn it and other things like that. But we would love it if it was, you know, if it was feasible, we would use it for sure.
If they can do it, we can.
So potential funding for these improvements for the generals, a lot of it's labor, honestly. Green volunteer workday, we'll do another workday at the end of the season. I, I do want to say on generals, we, working with the generals representatives, we decided to focus on that front generals field that they, that they use primarily. Opposite of that field is another one that needs a lot of work. I mean, I, I, I'm not exaggerating. I bet there's at least a foot difference between the infield and the lip going to the outfield. So it'll take some fairly major renovations that we can do in-house. But we, our focus is to get that front field done because quite honestly, the report we have from generals is other cities and other ball teams don't want to come play in Rollins because of the status of our field. We want to fix that, like now. And that's why we're putting all that effort into these volunteer workdays. And I hope that, that this summer, people will come and play on our ball fields.
So which field is it that they primarily use?
It's the one that you see right there, like if you were at a park at the parking lot at the sports complex, it's that one right there.
Southwest corner.
Yep. So I mentioned the infield mix purchase. We purchased that under our O and M existing funding for this current fiscal year. And then our goal is to use the same line item, it's not capital, it's an O and M line item that we've kind of put this as a high priority to, to hire this company to come in and laser grade and install that infield mix. And then a lot of it is, again, is in-house labor and equipment for aeration. We're gonna, we're gonna put off on seeding. We were talking about maybe trying to seed this spring and hope that the spring moisture would help. But then in talking to a few experts on turf, their, their concern was, okay, you might give enough moisture and warmth to germinate the seed, but then a harsh summer conditions with water restrictions would not keep that, that seed alive. So I think we're gonna hold off on seeding this year, because it is a financial impact. It, it's not a small amount. And then we'll do the top dressing and then of course, the seasonal mowing that we take care of. So that's kind of the basic background on the generals field.
Is that out of the general budget or is that the money we allocated from the?
Are you thinking Wyoming community guys?
Yes, Wyoming community, yes.
So that was earmarked for the VFW ball fields on Daly Street. And we'll get into that on the next part of this presentation. So O and M is where that's from. It's not building grounds maintenance, or maybe it is. Or baseball support fund. And then Trevor, did you want to say anything or does anybody have any questions about the generals or the sports complex?
If you have something to say, I'd, I'd like to hear from you.
I do, actually. And I just got this letter yesterday. We'll see, so. Haven't sent it to you, so sorry. So as Jason was saying earlier about teams not wanting to come play us, this is actually from the west representative for leading baseball. Hope I turned it enough to come out. Outlines.
Thank you.
Basically what their problems that they saw last year. We did go ahead and schedule some home games this year in hopes of, because I know Jason's gonna try hard and we're doing everything we can to get fields ready. And my, we're, we're not even close though. I mean, in all honesty, the, like the infield mix, how much infield mix do we purchase, approximately two inches? So, and, and I understand, money's money. Everything you can look at on any website says minimum of four to six inches infield mix, we, we, we can only afford to get two. It's not even hardly gonna put a Band-Aid on the problem. We have deeper than two inch holes to, to fill with our infield mix. I mean, it is, it's a roller coaster. It's, they are, the, the fields are in horrible and unsafe shape.
So when is your volunteer workday scheduled for one?
I believe we wanted to push it back to late April. Did we just schedule ours yet?
We, we talked about it, we've got to let, see if we have wind, snow's gonna come off field. And as soon as that is, we'll have, we're gonna be there multiple weekends, I'm sure.
I know Tyrell told me yesterday that they're planning on, so typically what we do is we do a, the city parks crew spends all day on a Friday and then the volunteers from the groups spend all day Saturday. And then prior to that, we do an inspection together so we can identify what we need to focus on. But I think Tyrell mentioned, it's gonna be three days for our city parks crew just at the generals ball field this year. And I, I, I hear what you're saying about the infield mix. There is some sort of infield mix under there, it's not just dirt. And so that's the thought of two inches of, of good new infield mix by laser grading, that's the big key right there. So you start from scratch and you do get that on top. And that's the first step. We're hoping to come back the following year and the year after that and replace more infield mix. But it's not cheap, honestly, and so that's why we wanted to start with two inches.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm here to talk to you guys. I think Jason's doing everything he can, he's doing great. I have no, no problem there. It is not cheap. We are literally only talking about one field still. We have three teams of ours that try to play on that one field. That's also where they have to practice because the other, that's the only option. That's, I mean, we're, it is, it is not cheap and that, that complex has been let go for long enough that it's got major issues.
I just hate to say this, but if I'm reading this letter and it says it's unsafe to play, I mean, why are we even using the field? And I, I, I'm a baseball fan, my kid plays baseball also, okay? And I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but why are we allowing kids on this field? Why are we, you know, at this point in time, it's a sad scenario, but, and I've been around the state myself. I've seen lots of different baseball fields myself too, but Rollins isn't the only baseball field like this either in the state. I will point that out and say that, right? So I'm not trying to call out Ben over in Green River about this, but I can tell you that there's some nasty fields in the state that should probably not be played on also and they should have letters sent to them too. And I'd like to know if that has happened.
It has, it has. Actually, they made Rock Springs had to completely redo their field two years ago for the same reasons.
So I, I mean, I don't feel if, if they're sending this kind of letter to us, why are we even allowing kids to play on it?
I, I'd like to address that because I, I think that we have an obligation as city employees. If, if there's a liability or a safety concern, there are fields first and we wouldn't allow play. Honestly, with the heavy dragging and tilling we did on the infield last year and what we can do to, to drag the infields this year, I'm not as concerned about the infield. The outfield, it's the critters and it's the gopher holes, for lack of better term. And that's where this volunteer workday is. I think last year, we brought a bunch of topsoil or sand and then, you know, kids and volunteer, volunteers with buckets out there filling in those holes. But it's not just that one workday in the spring before the season starts. That's gotta be ongoing throughout the season. And as long as that happens, I feel like they're, they're playable and not necessarily unsafe or any more than any other ball field. The bigger picture is the whole left center field is low. And so that's gonna take some time and more than one year situation of putting that top dressing. Fortunately, the golf course has a top dressers and that's what Tyrell's gonna borrow. So we, we apply it evenly and we're not just shoveling it out, you know what I mean? But, so that's my opinion though, and, and I spent some time on those, on the ball field. And it's unfortunate we hear somebody say that and, and maybe it's because of one injury and one hole. But I've worked with ball fields for twenty-five years and there's always gonna be ankle breakers out there because the kids out in outfield, you know, kick their cleats in the turf and there's, you know, you can't do everything unless you have artificial turf and that's just not in the cards right now. Down the road, that'd be fantastic. And we have looked at grants for artificial turf. But, so I'm, I feel like they will be playable this spring and, and not in unsafe condition.
No, I agree, and that's why I said, we did schedule home games this year. Well, I think we're gonna be playable this year. I just want to make sure it's, it's definitely known that this is not like a one time, this is it and fixes the problems. Because we're, we're a ways away from that and quite a few dollars away from that. And like I say, this, this is only one field. We were offered this year like a B-team state tournament, which we did have to turn down because I, I think we get fields playable. But there's no way we're gonna turn them up playable for eight teams in four days, you know, on weekend. But that is, that is something that they, we can definitely have in the future. We get them in, we get them in good shape. You know, a couple hundred plus kids for three days, families bring quite a bit into the community. We've got, this year we've got really close to thirty games scheduled, thirty home games scheduled. We kind of went light on our home games this year, so everyone that we play, because we do, we travel all throughout the state. So like, we're gonna play Jackson. We usually play them there one year and here the next. All the teams we play there one year, here the next, we decide to play away this year so we can work on the fields. Because I do believe, you know, laser grading this up, this fall is gonna be a lot better for next year. We're going right direction, I just want to make sure. We're going right direction. I just want to make sure that, make sure that the point's made that we're not, it's not a one-time fix and it's, we're not quite, we're not gonna be there yet.
And I, I think to summarize, and this is for Little League fields as well as generals, it's not something that's gonna happen overnight. But if we don't start now and we are not proactive now and we're being as, as fiscally responsible as we can. It's one of those things where we look back in, in five years, we're gonna look back and go, wow, you know, we kept at it and look where we are now. But what's more important to that, in that five years, if we have these great fields and great condition, it's the ongoing maintenance from then on. You gotta keep them. I was involved with building a new sports complex in 2003. And they're still in great shape, but we trained the staff, we trained the volunteers to take care of those fields. And now 20 years later, they're still, I mean, they're not like they were when we first built them, but they're still in really good shape. But you gotta take care of them and stay on it. Thank you, Trevor. I think if you don't mind, I'd like to jump into the Little League portion. So we can get through in time for the, there's another work session at 6:45, I believe, so. So we also worked on developing a partnership with Little League. And it's been great. We had a, a spring volunteer workday in 2021 and and spring and fall volunteer workdays in 2022. So that's city staff, but that's also, and more importantly, the, the, you know, board members, parents, coaches, players from Little League that came and helped work on the fields. So in fall of 2022, so just this last fall, we did rototill all in fields and warning tracks. And that's what I was saying, like those warning tracks when I, the snow was gone last week, I was like, wow, they're in great shape. We're not gonna have to spend a bunch of time with those. The city paid for a new roof at the concessions area. They were getting, it was leaking onto their, you know, storage items and everything. And this is where that Wyoming Community Gas comes in. We were gonna use another fund, but once city council voted to allocate the Wyoming Community Gas and thank you Wyoming Community Gas, seriously, we were able to to use those funds to pay for that roof.
Jason, it was structured really weird where it's built literally so the snow goes in. Was that changed or is it still the very odd?
We didn't change the pitch of the roof or anything. We just replaced it basically. But you're right, it is odd. Because I went up there when they were working on it because I wanted the bird's eye view of the ball fields. And I was like, this is interesting.
Very interesting, especially for Wyoming.
Yep. This computer's wanting to update or something. Isn't that lovely? It isn't mine, no. Confirm? It says at 6:39. We'll see. It might do that at 6:39. But I have a paper copy, so. And then our parks guys did some repairs to the restroom roof that was leaking. We had a, a roof on one of the dugouts that blew 20 feet or more. And then took out part of the bleachers in a big wind gust. And so we repaired the, the roof at the damaged dugout, still working on making repairs to the bleachers, I believe, trying to find a part to do that. Made repairs and painting to the interior concessions building, and that was Little League that did that. And they also painted the concessions building and restrooms. So the spring, this, this spring coming up, we have ours scheduled very end of April, I believe. May, okay, May 6. And this is what we're planning on doing. This might change a little bit when we meet with Little League and we focus on different areas. We'll aerate all turf, we'll fertilize all turf, we'll heavy drag infields as necessary, pesticide application. Tyrell and his crew is gonna install new city ordinance signs. Sometimes it's the little things. They're all old and crumbled. It just, a nice clean sign sometimes says something. We bought it, finally got that home plate in. Took like eight months to get it. So we'll install that new home, home plate. And the, the bollards at all four entrances of the ball fields, they're, they're wooden. And they have a chain going through them and they're like this. And we lost one last year and they crumbled. So anyways, Tyrell purchased good new strong bollards that we'll install. And that'll honestly clean up just the entrance to that part quite a bit. And then in the fall 2023, this is pending budget. We would hope to laser level and imply new infield mix such, or similar to what we are gonna do with the generals baseball field. That would be $30,000 to get that done. We wanna heavy drag and rototill all in fields again. We hoped to do this last fall, but ran out of time. We have a contractor that's gonna do the work for us and this will be paid for through Wyoming Community Gas as well. Repairs to the concrete and asphalt around the concessions building. That's another major eyesore to that ball field. And people that come there for the first time, I don't know, we kind of talked about it, like, do they want to play again next year? Just that alone. And, and, and actually, we're not sure. That might be Wyoming Community Gas, but that might be our ADA handicap funding that we have capital that we might use for that instead, so that we can use the Wyoming Community Gas for other improvements. And then we need to talk with Little League. They have a grant from the CCSD number one rec board to improve the dugouts as well as a grant to improve the backstops. And we probably, when we meet, we'll talk about where we are with that. HF Sinclair gave Little League a grant this year to install one new scoreboard. So that's a good start. They still need another one, at least one.
That grant doesn't cover the entire cost of the scoreboard, but we're not other sponsors for that.
And I should say, similar to what Trevor said, one of our goals and one of these things that, that that we see in the horizon in 2026, Little League has an opportunity to host a state Little League. Is that correct? District tournament, which would bring lots of teams to Rollins, fill up hotels, restaurants, support our local businesses, sales tax, all that good stuff. So that's kind of part of what, as we're looking at what we're gonna do with these ball fields, that's what we're thinking also. Let's get to the point where we can host that and be proud of, you know, be Rollins proud, really. All right. And then, so some funding sources for the ball fields is HF Sinclair grant and I apologize, I don't think that was 10,000. It was 6,000? Yeah, which is still great. Thank you HF Sinclair for that. And the Wyoming Community Gas, $10,309 that went for the roof replacement may go towards the concrete and asphalt repairs. And it helped us pay for those bollards. And so we might have some funds left over that we'll talk with Little League when we meet to do site inspections to see what we can do with that funds. Other is City of Rollins and a lot of it is, some is operation and maintenance funds. We have a baseball support fund, which is, which is huge right now for what we're trying to do. If we can continue to, to fund that. And a lot of it, again, it's in-house labor. We're, we're being fiscally responsible. We recognize that we're, that, you know, we don't have unlimited funds to take care of these ball fields, so we're doing the best we can. And then we mentioned the infield improvements pending the budget process this year. And then Rollins Little League, you know, the grants they received as well as the volunteers, because you could put a dollar value on all those volunteers that show up on that Saturday to help work on the ball fields. So that's going through the Little League part. And I'd like to answer any questions from council or if Little League would like to say anything.
I think we have just a couple of things we wanted to say. Obviously, first and foremost, thanks for having us tonight. Secondly, I think, you know, Jason had mentioned the tournament that we have potentially coming in 2026, which is amazing. That's gonna be six days long, 12 teams. You know, the, the revenue brought back to the community would be amazing. But I think even more important than that, this year we have 151 kids sign up for our program. You know, which is, which is a good number. Baseball is important to the Rollins community. I mean, so many kids are involved in it and they can be involved in it from the time they're four years old till the time they're 19 years old. So I think just giving them that, you know, that place to play, that safe, you know, the foundation to play and then eventually move up into the, the other ranks is just so important. You know, we, we worry so much about our generations of kids. Oh, they're just playing video games. They're not out doing the things that they should be doing. And I mean, this is foundational, right? Like, I mean, how many of us grew up playing baseball and things like that? So I just think it's just super important just for the entire community of Rollins. And I'm probably biased, but also, one other thing we'd like to mention, we are gonna try for some, some extra lighting for the tournament. That's very, very expensive. We only have lights on one of the fields down there. If we host this tournament in 2026, it would really be important to have lighting on at least two fields in order to make sure that the game flow and stuff is appropriate. And then obviously, we have a great board, so what else do we have?
I will say from a coach's perspective, seeing what was done this last fall to the infield, I mean, they went from being like a basketball court to being very soft and nice. And I'm really excited for, to see what the snow, when the snow comes off, what they look like because I was excited. I know it sounds weird to get excited about how a baseball field looks and feels, but I was excited. And I think the kids, the kids will like it much more too.
I, I can tell you, I don't know if you all are familiar with the baseball programs in Torrington. But it's what everybody does. I don't think they do much else. And so, you know, I grew up being very pro baseball and it is a like any sport, you know, it's a growth thing, you know, you have to learn to win and you have to learn to lose and you have to team sports and all that. So I, you know, I see a lot of, I see a lot of importance in these baseball fields. I do remember having, oh God, it's been quite a while ago, that Rollins did host some really big tournaments. And that's, yeah, it's been a while. I, I don't remember. I just remember the Torrington bunch caught me. I had to go buy them all hamburgers. But anyway, it was, it was a big, it was an economic growth thing and there, that does bring a lot of people and whatnot. Is there any smaller tournaments and stuff that we can host in the meantime to help boost the economy to be able to help pay for this stuff?
Well, I don't, I don't know about tournaments specifically. I mean, last year, for the first time in several years, we invited like Saratoga over to play. And obviously that's very small, but you know, they brought their team and they probably went out to eat and and little things like that. I, I guess we maybe haven't necessarily talked about the possibility of hosting. Douglas did that last year. I think it was kind of in preparation for their own district tournament, because that's where districts will be this year. Like, I think just like a trial run for them. So I think, you know, that's definitely something we could put on our radar and, and, and try to do.
I just know that if you have like, oh, any kind of event where you have a two-day event where the model butts in bed, you know, the visitors council and stuff like that can, you know, if, if we can actually show that we're bringing visitation to here, you know, staying overnight, two-day events and that sort of thing. More money is available from them and such like that. And then the, the school district and their recreational deal, that's, that's changed quite a bit in the last few years, but stay on them, you know, they, they still hand out money and what you all are doing is, is exactly why they do, you know, recreation for local kids.
The conditions of the, the ball fields have, have probably precluded us from, from doing that for the past couple of years and and understanding that there was a season cancellation in 2020 due to COVID. But the general condition of, of the ball fields, the VFW fields has probably precluded us from hosting a tournament in the near future. As Melissa mentioned, last year we had Saratoga up for a night game, which we were able to, to host a home run derby and let the kids, allow the kids to play under the lights. In return, we traveled down the next day and played a day game on, on their field with our Little League program. Found that to be wildly successful for both, you know, establishing that relationship, one, but then a, a player development as well, talent competition. But with these improvements in ball fields and reliability of the ball field, particularly lighting system, bathrooms, concessions, all of which have, have improved in the past few years, might, at least in my view. I think the doors is open for us to expand on that exponentially going forward.
Sure. And I understand not having the right facility to host big events, but I was part of the club for a long time and we struggled with the same thing. Money, you know?
You talked about rodents. Is there any other way to get rid of them? Because, I mean, plowing it and then they dig up another hole.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be doing some treatments, essentially, doing some poisoning and some, some smoke bombs and just kind of hit them. Because there's, there's not just a cemetery.
Okay.
And that kind of ones, but it's, it's a manageable population that I think we can take care of.
See. Multiply like rabbits. Yes. And then the, the tournaments that you're talking about in 2026, as well as increasing the number of people who come out to play for the generals. The seeding and the timing, I know you're taking it slow, but in taking that timetable, will that give us the good grass, the good ground that we need by 2026?
That's a good question. And, and actually, last spring or fall, we got together and we actually have a, a goals, like a spreadsheet that we developed with Little League. And it's got short-term, midterm, long-term, and it's got, you know, based on funding and what needs to be done. And so it identifies everything, like replacing the restrooms. Now, is that honestly feasible? Is that the best investment for the city to get ready for that 2026 season? I, I don't, I think probably not because the funds, if, if we come across grants or other fundings, there might be other ways that we want to spend it. But we do have a pretty elaborate goals, you know, sheet that we follow. In fact, Brandon, I don't know if you wanted to mention, but Little League had a great idea to have some sort of a plaque on the concessions building that listed those goals and showed what we've done and what we're looking to do. So maybe local contractors or individuals that might want to donate to the ball fields can see, oh, they're planning on doing that. I can get my backhoe down there and take care of that, you know, and and so that's a tough question. I, I know it feels like we're taking baby steps, but I, that right now, that's all we have to work with. And the fact that we are taking those steps is a great start, I, I feel. And I don't know, I'm curious and I'm, I'm looking forward to our, our site visit this year to see where we are now. You know, after the fall workdays that we did, you guys did a lot of painting and fixed the, the concessions building and had the health inspector come out and do a site inspection and identified a couple of things. So that was already taken care of by Little League volunteers. So we'll know more in, you know, a month after we meet and see where we are and kind of revise that goals sheet that we have. And maybe the goals we felt last August are, are gonna be different now. I don't know. But I think all we can do is try and I feel very fortunate that we have these two groups. And I feel like we have the same vision. So we want to get there, you know, our parks guys and gals and the City of Rollins supports baseball and, and supports our ball fields. And, and so we can't do it alone, like I said before. And, and Little League can't do it by themselves and generals can't do it by themselves. And that's why we're working together to do our best. So it's, it's hard to say what exact steps we'll have to take to get to that 2026 tournament. But that's why we kind of wanted to come here, just so city council can have an understanding of where we really are and what the status of our fields are. I feel like we've made great improvements in the last couple of years, but they're small compared to the big picture of where we really need to go. And I want to reiterate, once we get there, we need to maintain those ball fields and not let them go to get to the condition they are now.
I, I gotta just tell you that, and I've said this a lot of times about volunteers in our community. If we didn't have volunteers in our community, we'd live in a very sad place. We really would because it's amazing how much stuff volunteers do. So all that you guys do, I want you to know it's totally appreciated because we don't have the money just to go out and hire somebody to take care of our ball, ball, ball fields, you know, it just, it's not where we live. But between the city and your all help and all your volunteers help, it, it's much appreciated and we'll, we'll get there. You eat an elephant one bite at a time, so.
I just want to add something else. We have some really neat parks in this, in this community. And I've said before, we're, you know, working for other cities throughout. I feel like we're kind of a park-rich community, which is a great thing to have, but it requires maintenance and operations and capital upkeep and things like that. So any, if anybody feels like we're neglecting or not doing the best we can with these ball fields, it's it's part of a really big picture and we have the same obligation for Washington Park and Bolton Park, you know, and some of our our green belts and our other areas. So it's a big picture that this guy's got to maintain and keep this town and and its beautification efforts moving forward. So it's not like we're we're trying to put Little League off by not putting a bunch of funding in there. It's just we have a lot to take care of and we don't want to neglect anything, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Councilman Weisberg?
First off, I want to apologize if I come off rough, right? Rollins is big on building things, having great, nice looking things, but not maintaining it. That's what you hear throughout the community on a lot of things and it's sad. We had the best ball fields in the state with that sporting complex when they were built. I remember them being built here. It was a great thing, great for the community. We got rid of Newman Fields and brought in American Legion baseball at that point in time instead of Junior Babe Ruth and Babe Ruth programs. So, I mean, baseball is huge in our community and it's sad to see this happen and and the fields to be in the shape that they are. But when we receive a letter or you receive a letter that says our fields are unsafe, we have an obligation ourselves too to protect the people of the community and the people that use them fields too. That's why I want to make sure they are safe to play on. If they're not deemed safe to play on, we can't be letting kids out there getting hurt. We're liable for that in the scheme of it all. You know, Jason, you're doing an amazing job, you know, and and your crew is doing an amazing job with what we've given and and being able to focus on what you focused on, right? It's much appreciated. Your boards are doing great. I mean, trust me, I appreciate everything that's being done behind the scenes because that's not seen. I mean, I remember when Little League was like down big time. You guys have done an amazing job bringing it back up. Same with the American Legion program. There's multiple kids, I call them kids, but they're adults now through our community that has taken advantage of scholarships and been able to go to that next level in baseball here. We've had great programs in the past and I want to see that continue. And it does start with the Little League, you know, all the way through American Legion, you know. So I do want to say thank you. Sorry if it come off rough. I just don't want to be seeing kids played on fields that's not playable. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, again, thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. It does make a difference. And hopefully, with some of the extra money we've added to the ball fields by the gas company and that, that it'll be put to good use and I trust you'll make it better. And I wish we weren't filthy stinking rich. Well, we're filthy stinking, we're just not rich. You know, it just would be nice to have an unlimited amount of money to do some of those things with. And some of our neighbors I know going to Rock Springs and looking at their racing facilities and then ours, which we handmade, you know, I mean, some of them communities just have a tremendous amount of money compared to us. Gillette's another one, you know. It's pretty hard to outdo them guys, but but we do have to maintain a certain level and I hope we can get to that and be proud of that. So thank you for all your hard work.
If I I could just say one more thing, and you mentioned this, Mayor Wykam, we are in good hands, I really truly believe, with Tyrell and his Parks Crew, as well as the volunteers in this community, because volunteers do make this community and they've proven again and again to to show up and get the work done. So we are in good hands.
When you hire somebody and they do it for money, that's one thing. When people do it for a passion, it's a whole nother level. And that's that's what makes it work. So.
And I would strongly suggest to advertise the things that you're doing, Facebook, paper, whatever you have available and let the community know, especially when there's needs. We have some of the most generous people I know in our community. And if they know there's a need, they'll give.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. So I don't think this is going to take very long. The next thing on the agenda for the work session is there's been a lot of discussion about people wanting to set up a town hall meetings. And so I just wanted to have a discussion among the council and whatnot about, are you all interested in doing that? And if so, where, when, how, how do you want to set it up? It's, you know, just kind of, I guess we need to cross the path first. Is do we want to do that?
Wasn't the the town hall meeting that was done before, I think it had to do with the the water crisis and there was a town hall meeting for that.
We moved on the dog park and the skate park town hall too.
Well, yeah, and those were, Jason, when he was doing the dog park and the skate park, had meetings up at the school and met with the kids. What do you want? What do you want it to look like? And they helped design it and that sort of thing.
And they did the rec too, yeah.
And then the true town hall meeting was when there was the uprising over the water and people just didn't, you know, they just wanted information. And so you can let them run around gathering all the misinformation you want or just stop and tell them and that's what was decided. And and I didn't stay there for much of it because I just had surgery right before that. I stayed for a portion of it, but the feedback I got was people did appreciate it. So I don't know. Councilman Weisberg?
Is this a, I want to know if this is for us as councils, the town hall, or city employees holding town halls? Because the the town halls that were, have been held have been for the city employees doing it, the, you know, city manager and the engineer and everyone else was up on stage on the, you know, at the Jeffrey Center for the water. When Jason had done the one at the rec center, I mean, they are very well attended and my, I went to the water one also, you know, and the one at the rec center for, I think, the skate park. I didn't make the dog park, I don't believe, but I went to those. But is this for us as council members to have town halls or or the city employees having town halls on issues and and things that's going on in the city? Because my view is this, if we are wanting a town hall for a a a city or us council members, we have a town hall twice a month.
Well, this is, this is not something I thought of, okay, but on the other hand, it's been talked about. And so that's that's one of the reasons I wanted to have brought up tonight or one of the reasons it is brought up tonight. And that is, you know, if we're going to go talk about water and such like that, we're not the people. So so it depends on the subject of the, and that's what I want to talk about, is if we are going to have town hall meetings, are we going to go there and let them ambush us with, what do you guys want to talk about? Or do we want to set up?
A structure.
A structure, like on water, they went there to listen about water. Well, we would have been silly to have anything but our professionals up there explaining it.
A hundred percent agree.
Now, if we're going to talk about some things, it just depends on what the subject matter is, and that's what I'm saying. I don't know what the subject matter would be and I don't know how y'all want to do it. Bruce first and then.
Well, if it ends up, if we got majority council there, it's basically, then we get into a court.
Well, but we can advertise it as such. And 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 the other thing is, is at that, at a town hall meeting, you really would never take an action. I can't see us ever taking an action. But it, anyway. And and so you had something?
My thoughts are that maybe it would be better to wait until we have our new city manager in place, whoever that person may be. Because that might be the avenue in which we steer this, you know, like previously, we had city staff. Well, we're not going to go tell Myra to go stand in front of a bunch of people and talk about communications because we're not her boss. And and we're in this area where we're in limbo right now, you know what I mean? So I feel like that might be a good task that we could give our city manager and say, what would this look like? Who do you want there? Who do you, but I do feel like if we're going to do that, it needs to be structured. It has to have an agenda.
I I do too.
I don't want to go up there and just get yelled at for
Get yelled at for every little thing?
Yeah.
Well, and not have the answers because no one can, no one can remember fifteen feet of books. I mean,
Absolutely.
You know, you just can't.
Yeah, absolutely. And I always think that's what I'm walking into.
Okay, so is it everybody's thoughts that, let me just ask this, does it, does everybody go along with their reasoning that we should just wait until we get the new city manager? And I'll just start over here and ask you, Steve.
I would agree. And I also agree with Bruce. Once we're all sitting in a room, we are technically in a meeting.
But we could structure it as a meeting.
You you could, but you're still going to be sitting there with the ability to vote. You're not going to vote, but you would have the ability to arrive at a decision.
But, yeah, we we would have to make sure that we didn't. Does that make sense?
Or was the last
Or we could rotate who goes. We could have two people at each meeting or designate two.
We we could, but it depends on the subject matter. I mean, there's so many variables.
Was the last town hall, was everybody, all the council members there?
No.
No, no, I can't.
You were the only one.
So couldn't you just make it, make sure there wasn't a forum?
Three people was there at that, the town hall.
Linda Smith was there, myself.
But we were not involved in the meeting, so that makes it different. Okay?
But we were in the audience.
We're in the audience, not participating.
Okay.
Nothing was asked of us.
I got up and gave the welcome, but that's it. I mean, it was more like, thanks for coming. These guys will tell you, you know. And but it depends, it depends on the subject matter to me as to whether we're even the right people to be there or one or two or whatever. But it it depends. What do you want to talk about? And so.
Well, I do think it would be a good idea to follow up the town hall on the water issue. Like she said, that might be something for the city manager to tackle when he comes into place, where you have all the city people there. And then depending on the decision of how many times they can water their lawn,
Yeah.
you have all the experts there to explain why that decision was made.
Sure.
I I would go along with the same thing is what has been said, right? You make a great point, though. A follow-up town hall would be excellent. We're coming into spring. People need to know what's going on, what's going to happen. And on that note,
You two get to go.
Honestly, on that note, I would, I would recommend not waiting until there's a a city manager hired at that point to know because we we would end up having the professionals up there doing it anyways. So we have the people established now that know that.
One point I would like to throw into that, and that is, Tom has informed me that within two to three weeks, we will have, we will have the update and know where we're at on water. And that's when we're going to schedule a meeting with St. Clair also so that we can update them, put them back in the comfort zone. And then that, once we get that update, then after that, I would consider scheduling another town hall meeting to update people on water.
Maybe in May.
But I'm not just talking about that. I mean, is there any other thing that we've, that you guys feel that we should have town hall meetings about other than what Chris mentioned, we have two a month. But I I don't know of any other subjects other than, well, potholes.
But even even then, we are not, we are not the people you ask.
I don't fill potholes.
We don't, we don't.
That's what I just could say. Basically, the town meetings in between the city manager and them people. And if there's a problem, it's for them to bring to us. It's far, far, as far as I see the way it's supposed to work, we can't, we don't change it. I mean, to a point, you don't want to
All we're going to say is we need to fill potholes. However you do that, it's however you want.
And if they need money, they come to us to get it. But basically, the meeting should be more in between the city's manager and his people than us because
We can't.
We don't really decide what they're doing, you know what I'm saying? That's why I understand how this all works. We don't.
No, you're right.
No, that makes sense.
Don't make all of them decisions. I mean, they can't come into us and we have a meeting, we come in the next day and go down to them and tell, you guys got to go do this, do that and that. We can't do that. So.
Nor do we want to.
Oh, yeah. So so I mean, it's, it's.
You're right. That that's, that makes all the sense in the world. And that's why, and that's why I wanted to have this discussion because I don't know.
Yeah. If we're going to do it, it'd be more to the
And then be there for support.
And that kind of them and maybe some of us give the support behind it or something. But it would be more for them to discuss with the people or have a
Agreed. And I think at that point, if we're their support or whatever, we sit in an audience, it's not even a, we don't make decisions. We just hear what complaints are from our city, the constituents we have.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from you guys, and I'm looking at, well, I guess we got time, what am I doing here? What I'm hearing from you guys is that everybody agrees there needs to be an update on the water issues. Two to three weeks, we'll have that update. Maybe at that time, whatever meeting follows that, we can sit down and talk about that town hall meeting and then you will know it's coming and kind of tell us how you'd like it structured and and that sort of thing. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
I see. Okay. I, that makes sense to me. You know, on the pothole thing, the best idea I got ever was from Councilman Espinoza. And it was to sell the potholes to Colorado.
Well, I was going to tell radio men when they were complaining about snow in town, the high end of snow, they can haul it off free all they wanted.
Yeah. Well, I I zoomed into the governor's report and at four and gosh, half of our wildlife is dead and our deer and our antelope and especially on the western side. And not much hope for it. Senator Hicks gave a big, not a big, but a a an overview of where we're at with water. And we're not going to flood, but I'm not sure every other town in Carbon County might not. Because it's it's worse than it was when, I remember looking at pictures of Medicine Bow and and an aerial picture and the town was about that big. And then there were railroad or railroad, there was a highway running in and out of it. And there was one running north and every other single thing besides the highways in the town was underwater for miles and miles. And then you drive up north of the river bridge at Fort Steele, the river was so full, they were worried it was going to pop the top off of it because it was starting to hit the bridge. And after a while, it floats them off. And they were worried about that. And you drive up north of Fort Steele and it it looked like the Everglades, just air, just huge miles of, everything's underwater. And and Olsons that lived out there, they had to get in a canoe
Remember that.
And ride a canoe to their car and this and that. And it's worse this year, so it's kind of scary. But we
Depends on how fast the warm up.
Well, in our town, I I just can't see that being a problem. The the other ones, they're they're going to have problems.
You're going to this week?
And, yeah, the, it's going to be fifty degrees in about a week, yeah, for about a week.
This week coming up after all this, so tell, I mean, you just imagine.
And there's supposed to be another, another storm coming in next week sometime.
But doesn't the city, we do have a flood area.
We do have a flood area. And and you know, that's another issue, just so you know, we have a we have that flood plain issue going on and there's a people working on solving some of that. But at one time, I I thought that was fixed because they had that, the the flood would come from the south and then it would go out into Hogback Lake, which is a big dry thing. And whatever got out of there would go to the, a catch pond by the Roden Bridge. Well, the road, the the catch pond ended up staying full and they put fish in it. And then the kids would go down there fishing, great thing, but it didn't work as a, as a flood control device. Once it's full, there's no place, you can't collect water because it's full. And so that whole thing needs redone, but.
Well, they they've changed a bunch of that. They went in and all the water used to come back in, the cuts out there, they diverted all that water out there to lake out there for fishing. So we, the cuts used to be full of water all summer, and winter, we'd go ice skating out there. So we, the cuts used to be full of water all summer, and winter, we'd go ice skating out there, there's kids. And then come through and it catches that pond and then there's actually, it used to run a creek all the way through Southside.
Right.
You know, which there's a culvert through there now, a big concrete pipe through there. I remember them putting it all in.
So is there any chance of damage to the culvert if there's a lot of water?
It shouldn't. I wouldn't know whether it would be. I don't know if any things have ever been checked on that culvert in how many years or anything else, what there have been. Would maybe, and uh, inlet on it is right there in the overpass.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
If an inlet right at the pond and all that too, so, I mean, I don't know. Uh, do you know of anything, Tom? Is there a uh, annual check that they do on that?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
Just so we could check and make sure we are prepared for a large amount of water?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be nice to have to complain about water?
Not potable water, but.
Yeah, all boil.
The real nice thing about it is like the baseball fields and all that's gonna have a lot of moisture in this spring. It ain't, the last several years, we went through wind blown, moisture sucked out of all the ground that. They're gonna have good moisture in this spring to come in that everything should come around a bunch easier this summer.
We live in a desert, you know, and that, and I, and I keep saying that and I know that's a lot of people, that just goes over their head a little bit, but. Honestly, we live in a desert and Gary Sundberg was the one that pointed out the fact that we're one of a few countries that plant grass. In in desert areas and I'm not, I'm getting rid of a lot of my.
Originally, this wasn't a desert where we're at. This was actually an oasis here and that's why a lot of it's here.
Well, yeah, but then, but then, Bruce, we're using them for fuel now. That's going through St. Clair refinery. I'm a little younger than that, but.
I I, the other thing I think a town hall would be nice on, and this is for future later, is snow removal. Snow plan, stuff like that.
I think that would be good.
That'd be a good idea.
Discussions about having a meeting before next winter with a lot of the snow removal outfits. And different staff, on their staff and kinda go over the whole snow removal.
How to do it correctly.
Our, our snow removal plan plus go over.
But it'd be good for the, the community to be able to participate in it and understand and, you know.
Because we still have a problem with a lot of the snow plowers just push their snow wherever they want it.
Well, you know what? This is no kidding. My front street was horrible and so was the back. I mean, and then. Mask grading come down there and plowed it all and I was very, everybody was so grateful to that guy about doing that. And he was very careful about where he put the snow and and then. Somebody. And it was a private individual that was hired by some of the people on the south, my, the roads on the south side of my house. And and they took snow from their driveways and put it in mine. And I'm serious, I had snowdrifts that big where you turn into my garage. That whole thing was full of snow. And I. I wasn't very happy about it, but I didn't, you know.
There's a pile of them go down through there in their driveways, real nice and clean, but you can't ride down the street, cause they got snow all the way down there.
I do think town halls would be a, a good idea, just to have that opportunity. Talk to the city with the experts on issues. So if we have one on water, then one on snow and.
I'm sure.
I think it's a good idea for the professionals to do the photos, right? We're just, I mean. Like you said, be there for a support group if need be and if you can make it, you make it or whatever. But I also agree with Councilwoman Wells and letting them decide if they wanna have them or not at the, that extent. Or we could direct, like, town halls to happen too. We can do that.
With like the water, we could say to our city manager.
Yeah.
That we, we would like to see a town hall.
Yeah, town hall.
And then leave it up to them for the logistics and.
And actually, the last one was brought to us by the staff, cause they were tired of getting hell beat out and they wanted to explain themselves and.
Yeah. I think they are a valuable tool.
I think they can be. I just also know that in our community, um. We might need bulletproof vests and guardproof masks and stuff. I, I don't know.
That's why.
I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna.
That's why she said she needed it structured.
I want to have, I don't wanna be sitting there, cause every time we say, I don't know, it goes out of our mouth. I don't know, goes in their ears. I don't care. And so I don't, I I wanna know what, if we're gonna do it, I wanna know what the structure is so that we know. What we're talking about and can research and have answers rather than.
But but also, I, as much as I've learned about the water system, I'm still nowhere near. All five to answer those questions.
Absolutely.
That's not our job.
Yeah.
I don't wanna.
It's way above my head even as, I'm a nurse.
Yeah, yeah, it's. That's why all these people run reefs, that's their, that's their job.
You don't know too much about pipelines, what the heck?
I was talking with my father-in-law about it and he was, he he says something, well, it's called like, I was like, it's a cathodic protection. I've heard that word like twenty times. He's like, that's what it's called. I was like, see, I'm an expert.
Now you know all about it.
Honestly, I didn't know how many pipeline experts we have in this town till we had this water problem. We have so many. There's three that aren't.
There's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of people work pipelining this town. I'm sorry to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, keeping people informed. I I know what it's like to be shoulder blocked or whatever. You need answers. You don't know what's going on. You, you wanna know. Uh, we've done a way better job of that. That, you know, the town has done a way better job of keeping people. Informed and sometimes it soothes them and they settle down and sometimes it gives them. Things to think about. It's.
But a town meeting with just the council, I just, I don't, I don't think that would work out real good.
Well, we have two a month.
Yeah, yeah.
He's right. I mean, seriously.
I wasn't trying to be negative. I'm just saying we have two a month.
So.
And for the, them to come in, in the citizens' participation and talk to us and and present their problems. Yes, we, we don't answer the question. We get, we can get back to them later on or whatever. But as a, a, a town hall, if you put us on a panel up there in front. I mean, it can become a consensus and and a decision be made.
Yeah.
Or as Ms. Wells says, you're bombarded by stuff that.
Yeah.
You don't even know what's gonna happen and you, why are you going to put yourself through that? And why are you going to try and answer a question you have?
Well, and I'm gonna tell you about the, keeping the public informed and this is, I'm not stretching it a bit. And you can, I'll show, hand anybody my phone that wants to see it, but so far today, I've taken one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen phone calls. Today. Now, some of them have been to y'all, but nonetheless, uh. That's fifteen phone calls today. That's today. So, you know, every, I I hope everybody in town has my cell phone number and I'm, I'm not selfish about sharing it. And I, it's on my cards, right up front. You know, thirty years of living here, my cell phone has been in. Radio, newspaper, ads, ads, ads and so. This need to vent or whatever, I, I, I feel it every day. You know what I mean? They, they, people, if they wanna talk to a council, they call me. And some of them are fun to talk to and some of them are not, but.
Some of them you just must do.
That's how you stay apprised of what. Maybe not what's going on, but what people think are going on might be a way to state it. You know, their perception is a lot of times different than.
Snow removal.
What it is, you know? All right, I'm gonna, uh.
Sure, it's snowing, yeah.
Say, during this uh, work session, so we can take a break and. Um, we'll go from there. This should be a very short meeting. Oh, I shouldn't have. Okay.
You just did that.
What?
Is everybody ready?
Well, we're waiting to be able to join a meeting.
Okay, let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, it's refreshed.
I just opened and closed and didn't even.
Oh, I just saw Dan.
I'm getting there.
Are they working?
I think it might.
You guys are good?
As far as I know. Find out when I vote.
Gotcha, we're good.
Everybody ready? All right, I will call this meeting to order, it is seven thirty-one, please join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next thing on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner. Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Kewalk.
Here.
Councilmember Jaclyn Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
All right, next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda, I would entertain a motion. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the April fourth, twenty twenty-three city council agenda as presented.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the April fourth, twenty twenty-three city council agenda as presented, is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you, next thing on our agenda is something new, it's the consent agenda, and we will be voting on items A through E unless someone pulls that out. So, Councilman Wells?
Can I request to have the minutes of March twenty-first pulled out?
Sure. Okay, anything else pulled out? All right, I would entertain a motion for the rest of the items. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the minutes from March twenty-first being pulled out, payroll March twelfth, twenty-three through March twenty-fifth, twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars and five cents. Accounts payable of March eleventh, twenty-three through March twenty-eighth, twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Executive session minutes from February seventh, twenty-three, regular council meeting March second, twenty-twenty-three, special council meeting March seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the item A, which is the minute of March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three pulled out, it will be there's been a motion made and seconded to pass the payroll of March twelfth, twenty-twenty-three through March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars and five cents. Accounts payable of March eleventh, twenty-twenty-three through March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. And the executive session minutes of February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, the regular council meeting minutes of March second, twenty-twenty-three, the special council meeting, and March seventh, twenty-twenty-three, regular city council meeting. And also approval of the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg?
I just, something's drawing a blank here of if I was here for all this, I could not remember. Can we check real fast? Something's telling me I missed one.
Is that last meeting? I wasn't at the last meeting either.
Yeah, you were at the last meeting, you were not at the last meeting, and that is the minutes that's been pulled, I believe.
Is that the one that's been pulled?
That's why I pulled it, yeah.
I just didn't, something's, maybe I'm thinking wrong or something, but.
It's better to check.
Sorry, you know, it's the time and something's telling me.
So, Councilmember Wells was not present on the seventh.
Thing you asked.
The next one is March second.
Should we pull those out separately?
We probably better also, so we'll have to modify that motion, but let's wait and see.
The seventh, everyone was, no, the second, so sorry, everyone was present. No, there's only six there, one, two.
Because we'll need to know who can and can't anyway, so we'll give them a second to sort that out.
Councilmember Weisenberg was not avail, was not present on the second, and then the seventh.
I was here the seventh, correct?
No, not on the second.
The second?
The second.
Okay, okay, I couldn't remember, that's why I was like
The executive session minutes for those two dates would also need to be pulled for the same reason.
Everybody was here on the seventh. The seventh, every, all council members were present.
Okay, so, who made the motion, I forgot.
Hold on, one, Sanger, seconded by Wells.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to move it down to executive session.
So, we're gonna, we're going to amend this to remove
Item D.
Item D.
And A, yeah.
I already did A.
Yep.
I did that originally.
Yeah, I'll second your amendment.
All right. No, no, this is one of, this is a new thing, and this is one of those kinks we're just gonna have to work out.
Well, we got a pile of stuff on this one, normally we don't have that much stuff, I don't think.
Well, this is just one of those things, like I said, implementing it, it's just gonna take a little bit extra. Oh yeah, for sure.
Knew I was calling this one. Forgot this one was the basketball game that Oh, that's right. Snow. Over at Hannah, I would have made it back.
Oh, these glasses, worst glasses I could have grabbed. I turned my head and I screamed as that.
The glasses at your eyes. I know I can say wrong.
Comes with age.
Okay, all right, so we removed, we just moved them out of the consent agenda, the executive session minutes, and then the minutes of twenty twenty, of March twenty-first.
Well, I think what we're going to do is, I'm going to do, ask for a friendly amendment to remove item D entirely, and then ask for the second to agree with that friendly amendment, and then we will come back to D, and then you can tell us who can vote on which ones. Does that make sense?
Because I moved the executive, I pulled them out and I put them down under new business.
Okay.
That's what, then I, the minutes, I moved out and put them under new business.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll vote on them then.
Correct, okay, so.
I amended.
Amend, and you accept that friendly amendment, okay, so we're ready to go then?
Yes.
We knew you'd screw it up.
I'm kidding, you're happy.
I just knew there'd be some, a little bit of work on this, yeah, till we get it right, but.
Okay. Okay, so we're doing the amendment. Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you, the next thing on our agenda then will be item A, which is the minute to March twenty-first. Do I hear a motion?
I moved them down to new business.
She moved them to new business.
Okay, so they're, okay, I understand, okay, okay, I get it now. All right, so the next thing on our agenda then is citizens' participation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, citizens' participation is a time that is outlined by resolution number two C dash ninety-six. If you have anything that you want to speak to the council about that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. If you want to speak, please raise your hand, and when you're recognized, go to the podium, and state your name to the clerk, and write it down for the record, which will be on the podium, and the these rules will apply to the entire meeting, not just the citizens' participation, and there'll be no personal attacks, no name-calling, address the issue only, you must remain courteous and respectful, and only the items not on the agenda will be discussed. and only the items not on the agenda will be discussed. Is there anybody that would like to get up and speak at this time? You can tell I did it for practice and I need it, sorry. All right, thanks. So, seeing nobody, I will move on to the next thing, which is a proclamation, and this proclamation is from the City of Rawlins proclamation, and whereas National Volunteer Week, first recognized by President Nixon in 1974 on April 16th through April 22nd, 2023, is celebrated throughout the nation to focus national, state, and local attention on the vital role of citizens serving as volunteers and being an integral part of the fabric of our community. And whereas the City of Rawlins and Rawlins DDA Main Street with our community are blessed with over 500 active volunteers logging thousands of hours each year, and whereas these volunteers dedicated their time to improving the heart of the community, of our community, and are participating in beautification, youth programs, boards, and commissions, and our police and fire departments, and whereas the voluntary sector is increasingly recognized as a third partner with the government and business in building strong communities, and whereas the City of Rawlins wishes to recognize these men, women, and young adults and children who have given of their time and talents to our community throughout our many city departments, and therefore I, Terry Wykam, Mayor of Rawlins, Mayor of the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the week of April 16th through 22nd, 2023, as National Volunteer Week. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, to be affixed this fourth day of April, 2023. You want me to sign it later? I will, okay, fine.
Just on behalf of the Volunteer Training and Recognition Committee, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, we just wanted to come up and share some of the things that the volunteers do just specifically with the street. So, we've got the Adopt a Street program, we've got the boards and commissions, the Rawlins DDA Main Street has several committees, volunteer firefighters, sports coaches, people who volunteers for events, especially with the rec center, golf and shooting range volunteers, and the victims advocates. So, we really appreciate all of those great volunteers in our community, and of course, as a city, we also appreciate all the other volunteers that aren't directly involved with the city. So, thank you for this proclamation, and thank you to all our volunteers.
Yeah, thank you to all the volunteers, thank you. All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a Shooting Range Advisory Board appointment. The applicant, Anthony, would you like to come up? And if you wouldn't like to, come up anyway to the podium and tell us your name and why you'd like to be on that board.
My name is Anthony Sawalna, I've been, gosh, handling guns since I was about eight years old. My father, he bought me a shotgun when I was a kid, and I just loved the outdoors. That was a way to escape where I grew up, gang-infested neighborhoods. So, being up in the mountains, fishing, hunting, camping out is what he taught me. And then from there, I became a junior camp counselor at 16, and then ended up being one of the first in our county to start getting a certification for hunter safety course. And then from there, I became a hunter safety instructor here in Wyoming, and also got involved with the Shooting Range. I'm now a range safety officer certified with the NRA. I have a basic firearms safety certification as well, so I've taught many children. Every summer, I take Potty Ball 50 kids up to the mountains for a week, free, charge, room and board, and teach them about hunting, fishing, and the outdoors. So, I've been out like that all my life. Became a builder, and I build a lot of cabins and homes up in the mountains, and find out that my roots begin here in Wyoming, even though I was born in Los Angeles and grew up there all my life, my great-grandparents lived in Claremont, which is just northeast of Buffalo, and my grandma and grandpa met there and got married, and then they had children, and then moved to Sacramento, to Los Angeles, then my mom was born. So, I moved up here 10 years ago to Rawlins, been in Wyoming for about 12 years. I love shooting, I've been handling weapons, gosh, since I was eight years old. Never been shot, never had an accidental discharge, nothing, you know. I've been really good, never had to shoot anybody, thank God, in self-defense. So, I believe I'm a constitutionalist, I believe in our Second Amendment, predicts and preserves all our amendments. I think that I can help out with a different perspective and opinions on the board. I am, gosh, I've been involved with the game and fish in California and Wyoming for many years, with the Angeles Volunteer Association, we've done a lot of rebuilding of indoor and outdoor shooting ranges, campsites, things like that, outdoor activities. I've probably logged in in 35 years, I know over, well over 12,000 volunteer hours myself, and then I've involved my children, all daughters, and they all know how to shoot, and they hunt and fish, they don't do it now, but unfortunately, but, you know, not even my wife does. But, so, I think I have a lot of experience to bring to the board and help out. I'm a good listener as well, and I'm a gopher, and they need something, I'm there for them. And I'm also a pastor, so there's a lot of things that I do. If you need your heater fixed, give me a call, so. It's free, I'm not selling, I'm not selling anything, but I think I can help out. Then I'm also, you know, I work for the City of Rawlins as superintendent for building facilities, and I do a lot of work in our outdoor shooting range and the indoor, so I know it very, very well now that I work on it. So, I just enjoy volunteering and helping out as much as I can, I mean, it's just, it's in me. I want to do it until I die. I hope I get to die here, I've been praying to the Lord that I can be, you know, buried here, and that'd be awesome. We'll see what happens. But, I'm open, you know, and hopefully, if I'm accepted, I can help the board that's there now, and not to change anything, but to help, it may be streamline things or something like that. It's always good to have different perspectives, you know, and that's pretty much it.
Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Jaclyn?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, Councilman.
I move to appoint Anthony Zambala.
Close enough, Sawalna, that's good enough.
To the Rawlins Community Shooting Ranges Advisory Board as the second alternate for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded, appoint Anthony Zabala to the Rawlins Community Shooting Ranges Advisory Board as the second alternative for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Thanks, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Anthony, for applying for that. All right, next thing on our agenda is city manager report and staff reports, Tom?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. To begin tonight, I've got three different dates for you to keep in mind. First off, April 11th, I'd like to have a budget work session at 6:30 here in the council chambers. We've been working hard on the budget throughout the city. We've gone through all the departments, and we've got a draft prepared, and I would like to share that draft with you with some strategies that we have to get some input from the council. So, April 11th, next Tuesday night at 6:30. April 19th, we will have a work session where the nonprofit organizations will be able to come in and to be able to talk about their organizations, and they are looking for funding from the city. The third date is, we've set our annual cleanup day for July 15th this year, and that's where we get volunteers throughout the city, and we go out and work on cleaning different areas of the city, so that'll be July 15th. On the pretreatment plant, as you know, our next step in that is to do what we call a wet run, where we run some river water through the plant. We came up with one more snag that we are working through. There is a clay valve that is right where the water enters the plant. There's a clay valve that has to be replaced. So, we've got that on order, and that'll put the wet run out about three to four weeks from now. So, we're looking at about the first week of May to do the wet run. The importance of the wet run will be to see how much water we can run through the pretreatment plant to get to the treatment plant so that we can see what we're looking at for water restrictions for this irrigation season. So, we'll have to push that out just a little bit.
Can I ask a silly question about that? When you see a clay valve, what's that? I don't know.
It's electronically controlled valve, it's a 10-inch valve in this case that's used to effectively, through the SCADA system, give the appropriate dosing of the chemicals needed to pretreat the water.
Okay.
It's a very technical valve that's electronically controlled.
Okay, thank you, I shouldn't have asked, means nothing, sorry. I just never heard that expression before. Thank you, sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Oh, that's all right. On our Water Master Plan through WWDC, we are at the stage where we are doing the contractor selection. We received three different RFPs from contractors, and we will report back to WWDC by Thursday of this week. So, we are at the stage where we are selecting the contractors on that. The last thing is, is our City View, the publication that we have, you know, that looks like this, the spring/summer edition is on our website, and we will have, the hard copies will be sent to us, hopefully, within the next week, week and a half, and we will get those out to the community.
Okay, well, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Weisenberg had a question.
Yeah, April 11th at 6:30, that's a conflicting meeting date with Planning and Zoning has a meeting that day also.
They have it at 5:30?
At 5:30, yeah, but...
Yeah, it'll be finished by 6:30.
Yes.
So, we should be able to go back to back on those.
Okay, everything good?
Yeah, I mean, if we can make it work, it'll work.
Sure.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, and I'm glad you did. All right, next thing on our agenda is a city attorney report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The first thing up is the, I sent this to you all in email. It is the request for comments on the Carbon County Planning and Development Department conditional use permit for the Two Rivers Transmission Line project. And this basically boils down to way out in the boonies, they're gonna be putting another transmission line in the air that connects one place to another. And it's not within the City of Rawlins, but when anything goes through the county, they request comment. So, if I have further information, if you need it. However, it is my opinion that a no-comment response just to show that we have put, we have seen it and we are aware of it.
I have no problem with that, agreed. Everybody agree with that?
A couple of other updates I have for you. We have signed contracts with the company that does the municipal recodification project. The pre-recodification is in progress, estimated to, we're in the queue for January of '24, but they are expecting to hire more people and be able to start us earlier. But, as we are in the queue, that moves us up the priority list. We've already been assigned a project manager and a codification attorney, and we are already trading documents that need to be there so that we can get this moving.
Awesome.
We have also signed a contract with JUSTFOIA, which is a public records request database system. The implementation and training is currently in progress, and we expect to go live on our website with that for May 15th. Basically, this streams line, streamlines the public records request, and it tracks it all the way through the system, from request all the way to response, and it's got the safeguards in it so that we do it in accordance with the law within the timeframe and that nothing falls through. It'll also drag department heads into it. Whenever we need information from different departments, that'll also be tracked through this so that we'll actually have metrics that we can report on public records.
Yeah, what's the name again?
JUSTFOIA, JUSTFOIA.
Is that something just for the public to use when they request documents?
Yeah, that's for everybody. Right now, we handle regular public records requests and any kind of police report or investigation. So, we have two data flows that come in through my office. The ones for the police, we handle right there in the office, but sometimes we get requests for any and all records pertaining to X, Y, and Z. This'll make sure that those bigger ones don't get lost. And it's basically forward-facing, so it's a link that goes on our face, or on our, sorry, city website. And anytime you want any kind of public records or information request, they would click there and fill out the form specifying what they want.
So, even records that wouldn't pertain to your office, they could go through there?
Yes, it's all public, because I'm the...
Any public?
Yeah, I'm the public records coordinator, so all requests go through me, whether I can answer them or not. So, this is another good way to bring other departments in so that we can track responses. One of the other things is also, right now, we get requests in from many different sources. I'm hoping to narrow everybody, funnel everybody into this one program because we get web requests, we get Facebook requests, we get police department requests, we get them from all over the place, and we're trying to narrow it down to one point so that we don't miss requests.
Thank you.
Another thing that we've got is, for those who either weren't able to be there or forgot, Rawlins Sinclair had a joint meeting to discuss the water, mainly the joint powers agreement for the water that we use from Sinclair and then give back to Sinclair, and how that contract works. And there is also going to be a committee formed, a joint committee between Rawlins and Sinclair to make sure that communication is increased and done better moving forward. So, that's something I'm really happy about as well, I think that we need better communication between the two towns. Last thing for me is, the bidding rules have changed in a good way. Vehicles no longer need a bid bond, and the reason this is good is because before, our local companies maybe did not have the resources to be able to put out a bid bond to provide us a vehicle or to hold a vehicle for that long. So, this way, we can use more local sources because they don't have to put in a bid bond. They can just do a regular quote as a bid, and we can move forward, and it gives our local folks a lot more opportunity to be able to bid out our contracts.
I'm gonna bounce back to that Sinclair thing, just so you know, I did after that meeting in Sinclair. I did meet with Mayor Meeks from Sinclair, and I made him aware that we will be scheduling a meeting to meet with, you know, a couple of us councilmen with a couple of their councilmen at a time once we get this update on the water, which will be two to three weeks, and he was plenty happy with that, and, anyway, just so you know, that's what happened. So, as soon as we get that and we're comfortable with it, then we can let them know to have that meeting.
And unless you have anything else, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, next thing on our agenda is a direction from the city council to city manager and city attorney, is there anything? city council to city manager and city attorney. Is there anything?
I just have one comment. I I got some feedback yesterday about the roads and the maintenance that our staff have done all year, and they were all positive and overwhelmingly thankful for the efforts that our staff have done. So I just wanted to pass that along, that there was good feedback on how they've handled it this winter.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, our 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 staff, I feel sorry for them. When I got up this morning and looked out at the snow, we had to scoop and then think about a city full. I feel sorry for them. They've done an incredible job. Is there anything else? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to new business. I guess we have, so, I'm sorry, Lynn, those things that we pulled, are they going to be at the beginning or end of new business?
If you refresh, it'll
Refresh it. That was my problem too.
I only got one to pop up, I think.
You have to refresh.
I did.
So log out and log in?
No.
Just refresh, and it'll make you rejoin the meeting.
And when you rejoin the meeting.
So the minutes of March 21st, 2023, regular council meeting is under new business, and then the executive session minutes will be under executive session.
Okay.
I have to ask a stupid question. How do you read?
A little circle.
Okay.
A little circle in the left hand corner.
Yep, click it, and it'll wise up, and then it'll bring up the thing, join, hit the meeting and rejoin it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always ask a kid.
Yeah.
I might not know, or I might give a bad answer.
You're a kid.
Yeah. I guess in his eyes, when you grow up with kids.
I got grandkids your age, bud. Okay.
So let's see where we are.
Okay, new business. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is minutes of March 21st, I guess. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March 21st regular city council meeting.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the March 21st regular council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with four yays and two abstains. The four yays with Councilmember Weisenberg, Mayor Wykum, Vice Mayor Sanger, and Councilmember Lumen. The abstains with Councilmember Wells and Councilmember Seelaw.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve a state homeland security program. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve submission of SHSP grant application for $58,000 for partial replacement of police mobile vehicle radios.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve submission of an SHSP grant application for $58,000 for partial replacement of police mobile vehicle radios. Is there discussion? And I will turn the floor over to you, Chief Ward.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council, Mike Ward from the Rollins Police Department. The Rollins PD and most law enforcement agencies use two types of radios for communication. Our mobile radios are mounted in our vehicles, and our portable radios, Lindsey's in mind, are the ones that we carry with us. They usually have a life cycle of about 10 years. After about 10 years, they begin to break parts, the knobs begin to break. Also, technology advances usually during that time. Back in 2011, we replaced some of our mobile radios in our vehicles, and in then 2014, we replaced mobiles and portables. Earlier this fiscal year, we were granted a Y dot, an ARPA grant through Y dot to start replacing our portable radios. That grant had no matching funds, and the purchase of the radios is made by the state, so there's no money upfront. Earlier last month, back in beginning of March, we began working with the county's emergency management, who was coordinating the application of state homeland security program grants for various items that the different municipalities in Carbon County may need. We have a gentleman and a gentlewoman's agreement when we all get together with these these coordinated coordinated activities to figure out whose needs are are more pressing. So we had proposed $57,000 and change to begin replacing our mobile radios out of our cars. This fell in line with some of the other requests as well. Our second meeting was on the 20th. At that time, I did not realize that the grant was due yesterday. And like I said, we just started working on this about a month ago. So we had applied for the grant yesterday, knowing that I had not had approval from council to do so, but knowing that I could pull the grant back if you chose not to go forward with it. There are no matching funds with this grant application. However, we do need to make the purchase upfront and then get reimbursed through the state for that amount of money. So the grant application was submitted yesterday, and that's about where we're at. Any questions?
Councilman Weisenberg?
How long until you know that you would be approved? I mean, I understand you have the purchase upfront, but how long until you know you'll be approved?
It should be this summer, which would be into the next fiscal cycle.
And the next question is, is this something we need to have as a maintenance program for the future also?
Yes, yeah. Mr. Sarvi has been talking about moving us forward as a city with planning in the future for the replacement of of critical things.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I ask a question. I am on the committee that usually helps involved in making some of those decisions. Should I recuse myself?
Thank you.
Good question.
Online voting is closed. A motion passes with six yays.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief.
Refresh.
All right, next thing on the agenda. I, I should have pulled this off probably, but we'll we'll go ahead with it. Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd move to authorize the city council to approve up to $500 for the purpose of council training.
Okay. Been a motion made and seconded to authorize the city council to approve up to $500 for proposed council training. Is there any discussion? I will tell you that I'm the presenter here, and when this started, it was about that WAM training that I was talking about. And the first thing that I did was call a a couple of places to see what it was going to cost to use their facility with the fact that we needed big screen TVs and and whatnot. I did talk to Jason because I, my wife thought, well, why don't you use the golf course? And I thought, boy, it would accommodate 30 people and whatnot. And he recommended that I call and talk to the fire chief, which I did. And the fire station two is the perfect place to do this. There's plenty of seating, plenty of TVs, the internet's capable there, we'll be able to let people zoom in. It won't cost us a dime. So having said that, the, there might be, there might be enough money without this 500 to go ahead and do this training anyway because of the meal and so forth. So I I guess it won't hurt to authorize this, but I'm just telling you, I doubt like heck if any of it'll be used. But just to be safe, because I want this top, this training to be top notch, where we're going to be inviting other communities to join us as well as the the community to be able to watch us. I I really want this training to be top notch. So with that having to be said, yes, yes.
Is there enough parking at the fire station two? I mean, I know we have the big empty lot, we're training for training facilities, but in the main area, that would not hinder if there's a call or anything that happened. That's my only concern here.
There's plenty of parking.
Alan, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. That's my answer, sure. Yes, there should be plenty of parking, provided that we can get rid of some more snow between now and then. Yeah, it's it's a variable that nobody knows. Yeah, we can always park on the outside of that fence and and everything, and that doesn't affect anything going out the front of the station if we needed to respond to a call. So it should be fine.
Thank you.
I certainly hope this snow's gone a month from now, but it might not, might just be thicker. Who knows?
I just had to ask.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Oh, it did?
It did?
Yeah.
Don't complain now.
It's not working. It's not working, but yes, I vote yes.
Just blame this councilman over here for your computer not working now.
Online voting is closed. A motion passes with six yays.
Close, we don't need these computers here pretty quick. All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to a resolution. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve a resolution that authorizes a landfill fee waiver for residential customers to bring one load upon receipt of voucher in May to September 30th, 2023 of construction and demolition waste as shown by a hard-to-duplicate voucher to promote beautification within our community.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve a resolution that authorizes a landfill fee waiver for residential customers to bring one load upon receipt of a voucher in May to September 30th, 2023 of construction and demolition waste as shown by a hard-to-duplicate voucher to promote beautification within our community. Is there any discussion?
May win.
What's that?
May win.
May win.
May first, May.
May first, I guess. I don't know. I guess we'll listen to Patrick here, and he'll tell us. This is not specific. It says in May.
It just says May.
So what date in May?
So it would be upon receipt of them getting it in the mail. We know, we don't know exactly how long the postcard would take to mail, so some people might get it May 7th, and some get it May 9th.
Because last year, we did like a start date, and it wasn't actually a start date because the off, post office couldn't get them off in time. So then we had mad people. So we just, when you get them, they're good.
So the the possibility is they can get it on May 1st or before May 1st?
Our intent was to mail them in early May.
Okay, so you're, so it's after May, May 1st. Okay.
What is the purpose of mailing them in May, though, if we could get them out in April? I'm just curious, because we could set the date right now to say May 1st, and gone. I'm I'm on board with the Councilman Sanger on this, too.
We we can. That's totally just
We just didn't want a start date, just in case we couldn't deliver on the date at the post office. So it's kind of like, we can
But it's April 4th. If you say May 1st, we can work with the company to get them mailed. We can export the list of users. I can't imagine if we mail it next week, it wouldn't make it by May 1st.
I'd I'd like to make a friendly amendment to add that as May 1st, as a date, start date.
Who who seconded it? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lumen.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment? You don't have to. I'm just asking, since you're, you know, since you're new at this.
Right. My only problem would be is, as soon as they get the voucher, they're going to think they can use it. Or would you have problems with somebody coming in April and saying, hey, I got this in the mail?
That's kind of what our initial idea was, like to send it in beginning of May. So when they first get it, as soon as you get it, you can use it. And now, if you have a start date of May 1st, then it's going to be a start date of May 1st.
And I understand a hard start date, but that's up to your discretion if someone, that's not up to us to say they accept it or not, right? Someone went out there April 30th and, or whatever, 28th and had it, and they accept it, that's them that that they accept it, or they could turn it away, right, saying this says this date. That's my opinion, but I don't like not having a hard start date on something of such.
Honestly, I, the way this is worded, to bring one load upon receipt of, I kind of see where they're coming from about the start date and having, if you have a start date of May 1st and somebody doesn't get their voucher until the 4th, or they, anyway.
So are we just running one voucher this, and we're going to do like we did last year?
Well, the
Is that what?
Pros and cons, like, for the pros on that one is, like, dividing them in two, we still had to pay for the cards, mailing them out. It was about $1,500 per time. So then you add that times two, that goes to like $3,000, $3,500. But now, if we just do it once or a longer stretch, we only have that one cost.
But you're going to have people complaining because you only get to take one load instead of two. You know what I'm saying? You know how people are.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just have to say that a free landfill day, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give my little speech here. Free landfill day, everybody takes it out to the landfill, starting the very next day, they start generating a pile in their backyard for next year. So the goal, the goal, goal, geez, is to have a cleaner town. Well, with, I'm not sure we're accomplishing our goal, to be honest with you, because the day after this is over, then they start collecting stuff for the next time they can take it free. So personally, I I don't think we should have any free dump days, but
Well, I would just curious, because you go from May clear through the end of September. I mean, you got a lot of time to gather stuff to haul it off, too.
Sure.
That's one of the things I was looking at there, you know, where if you got a week to do it, and that's it, that's kind of pinches it back a little, so they pay attention.
Yeah, people last year really loved the idea of having more time. So then we took that idea and just said, hey, if we give you card, you have until September 30th.
One of the things that I noticed the first year we went to this voucher thing was that, and it and it was just from the folks that worked at the landfill, is that when when it was on a day or a week or whatever, they just ran their tails off. And and the other thing, without the vouchers, there were people that didn't, didn't, should not have been able to use our landfill for free, we're using our landfill. Where this way, if they have a water meter, they get the, they get the ticket. The other thing about it is, is by giving them a ticket that's that's usable for an extended period, you don't have the staff at the landfill just run ragged for a week. It's peanut buttered out, and it's better for you, correct?
Yes.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So is, are you, are you thinking that you would like to see more? Is that your thought? Instead of one voucher, like, one load, two loads, per se, is that what you're?
Well, that's, I'm sure a lot of people go on and take two loads instead of one.
And I
We're pinching the backload.
Yeah, so, so what was the, do you remember what the cost of each one was? Like, you said it was during that period, because I remember when we just did without the free, the voucher, we did a free landfill week. It was extremely high. And then I know when we went to two vouchers, it went, took quite a bit of cut.
The free week was about Um, the free week was about forty thousand, a little more. Um, when we did the two and we split up, they were about, the cost of like about fifteen each. So it did drop a little bit, about ten thousand or more. This way it's gonna drop even more, so.
A lot more, because I mean, I don't know if you're aware, it comes out of the dangerous building funds, I believe, correct, or?
We just take a loss for it now. There's nowhere to get money from, so.
It used to come out of, uh, dangerous building funds, it had to be paid for because it was the enterprise fund, had to show it.
La- last year, it was brought to council to decide which fund, and council decided the landfill fund. So we did keep it with the landfill fund this year, as, you know, these people are all paying into the landfill enterprise fund, so this is a, you know, paid back out to them.
So is, if it's thirty thousand, how much is that going to affect on that budget, Tom?
Um, it, it will have an impact on the budget, I don't know how sizable. I'll have to look that up and, and see, because it'll be based on the total revenue and what percentage we're looking at.
And the landfill enterprise fund just takes a loss to the equipment use and manpower. The only cost that's paid out for the fund is to do the mailing. Does that make sense? It's not like we, the landfill's check doesn't write a check to somebody for thirty thousand.
No, a hundred percent, I understand that, I'm just, I understand, it's still a lost revenue with the time and everything.
The problem with taking it out of the dangerous building fund is, what's probably one of our second biggest items, is dangerous abandoned buildings. Every time we do this, it used to be thirty to forty thousand dollars a year, taking out of that fund, which meant that we, it handicapped a different program that has, it needs attention too, so I'm, you know, if we're gonna do it, I think it should come out of the landfill fund. And to be honest with you, I don't, I don't think we should do it, but I'm, I'm not gonna say that again, but I don't think we should, and I'll shut up now. Councilman Weisenberg?
So how much more of an effort, because I mean, most of it comes with that, right? Your work and labor and everything, and I, where the cost is. How much more, in your thoughts, as a superintendent there, would it hurt to add one more load?
Um, you'll literally be doubling everything, so.
So you think it's not a good idea to add two loads, or keep it at one? Because in the past, it's been.
Would the cost go up since mailing?
We, we could probably mail them in like one envelope, um, the costs we got were for a postcard, so it might adjust. You know, like if you guys voted to do two loads, we'd probably switch to an envelope that got mailed once, if that meant your pleasure. So that cost might be up a little bit, but not double unless you wanted the postcard set at separate times. And then it's just how many people choose to turn them in.
Was last year the first time we did two loads? So before that, it was always just one?
Um, before that was what we like to call hell week.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You could take in ten loads in one week if you had ten loads, and so now we, we reduced it last year with the vouchers to two. And now it's even more with one through several months and.
I feel it works better with two, but have a time in the spring and a time in the fall.
So we did that last year exactly.
I know.
But it was double the cost to send them out.
You know, because you got everyone coming in the spring and cleanup and everything else, so.
But if you do it, you know, March first per se till, would be the September thirtieth would be the cutoff for the second one, anyway. So if you just ran it straight through, they only had two cards per se.
Two cards through that period.
Mailing in half.
Could you do one card on both sides? They bring it in, you put an X on one side, and then the second time, they take the card.
Those cards with the receipts.
Or tear it in half.
Okay, so our motion right now is, uh, I'm a little confused here, I think it's just, just the same, just to approve it, yeah, okay. Any further comments, Vice, okay? I, any more comments? Please open online voting.
So the friendly amendment did not go through.
Right.
Online voting is open.
Maybe, oh, there it goes.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. All right, the next thing on our agenda is, uh, an ordinance, uh, change. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve on first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance to amend Rollins Municipal Code, section ten point one five point oh seven zero. Failure to maintain liability coverage.
Second? Been a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance to amend Rollins Municipal Code, section ten point one five point oh seven oh, failure to maintain, uh, liability coverage. Is there any discussion, and I will turn it forward to you, Wendy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm not sure how in-depth you want me to go, but it sounds self-explanatory, it's our no insurance, um, ordinance. I've run into two problems with this in actual court cases where I've had to, um, well, I've had issues with it in two different ways. In one way, it, um, does not cite to the proper Wyoming statute, that's the biggest one. Um, so it's referencing the wrong statute in the body of it, so that has to be changed. The second thing is, um, that ours has the incorrect intent. The actual statute is called a general intent, it doesn't matter whether you knew or not. If you violated, you violated. Ours put a specific intent of knowingly or willfully violating. So that is not in alignment with the statute, so it's called mens rea, and our mens rea was more strict than the statute. And I have had, I had to dismiss one because of the mens rea issue, and I had to dismiss another one because of the statute issue. So this corrects both of those errors in our ordinance to make it match the state.
Okay, any questions?
Um, we are still working on getting a program that would automatically kind of update the ordinances, is that right?
That was the, um, muni code that I was talking about early, that we are in pre-implementation stage.
Okay.
Potifying, which means making sure they're copacetic with, yeah.
Help with this. So every time we do one of these, once it's been published and it's enacted, I immediately send it to them, so they stay up to date on what we've done.
So we always have a current?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
It hates me. Yes.
Jackies must be working.
Online voting has closed and motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is, um, an executive session. Councilman Wells?
I move to go into executive session at eight thirty-two PM per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five, to consider receiving any information classified as confidential by law, and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of witness and all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at eight thirty-two. Um, is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Okay, thank you.
Jackies isn't working then.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you.
It's closed right now. No passes.
Really? No passes?
No passes, but eastbound is open. No passes required. Yes, if I don't, we can. We talked.
Oh crap.
Hope I'm not doing the burden either.
I know, it was a good discussion, because I came in this morning.
Yeah. Do you, um, have you had a chance yet for the? Proposals yet?
Um, I'll do that tonight. Did Ellen send those to you?
I've got those, but I'm not opening it until you send it to me.
Because I wanted to send it.
Yeah, we, we talked about that.
She came and said that she had, but I will send them.
Well, just, I'll wait for you, just like we planned.
And then tomorrow afternoon, when do you wanna?
I'm thinking, uh, probably Thursday. I want to give everybody a chance to chew on this on their own first. And then once they chew down the proposals, then we'll talk.
Okay, we'll just schedule that.
Yeah, I'll put it on the calendar for Thursday, if that's okay with you. We have until the seventh, so. That's Friday.
That's Friday, okay.
But Saturday afternoon will be productive. Very quick, probably have a one hour meeting. Maybe Thursday one, or Thursday at eleven, time works better for you. Yeah, looks like you're wide open for Thursday.
Actually.
Yep. Is there a, if I do it, uh, let's see, eleven?
Yep.
Should be late by then. Take me a minute.
Just gonna try to get cleaned up, so we can get out of here. Yeah, I want that to be, I was gonna get them.
So we decided it was you and me. Okay. So you and me. And, you know. Stevie? Stevie?
Uh I don't know.
Hi.
I think. I don't know, Bud might be helpful.
Good.
Could be no, be losing the else. I think uh I think the least that we have is probably baskets. A lot of that stuff still be. Or language to me.
Oh, it's its own language, that's for sure.
Engineering language.
You know what's crazy is the RTIS now. It that's one thing the city really needs, is somebody who can do RTIS. Because. We have so many different roles at the city. That need help with RTIS. But the people that we have in place. It's so hard for them to learn. How to do it. It's it's like we were talking about, it's own language. And today's training just showed me. Just how hard it is.
Yeah.
To learn RTIS and I was speaking with Lisa from Engineering Associates and she said, yeah, I've been doing this since I was fifteen years old.
Ooh.
So.
It is a full language, eh?
Yes, and even then I was teaching her stuff. Don't tell her I said that, but I was. Just come from a different angle, because you can at a state agency. And how a municipality and how an engineering firm approach the same product. So. Do you want to do an optional coding?
You can do an option if he wants to take part. Cause I. I don't know which help I'll be.
Oh, it's important.
I think just a good discussion.
Being able to read between the lines is the most important part. Cause you can put on a nice show, but it means nothing.
We did find the two thousand ten master plan, I think you already had that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Found that in Lynn's office.
You know what's sad is that we have, we were digging through the records and we had a. Document that we found. From the guy who built the line. The water superintendent who actually built the Wood State Line in nineteen twenty.
Oh my goodness, how fun.
And it provided more information about the city of Romans water.
Oh, man, it did.
Than the level one study.
Oh, no.
Oh, man, it did.
That's crazy.
Yeah, here's just very point of fact. Wells in town will not be successful. You simply don't have enough water.
They knew that a hundred and three years ago.
Apparently. Yeah, cause they drew down.
I haven't heard about yet.
They drew down forty three feet of water at the wells here down by the railroad tracks. Forty three feet and I don't even know how many years, I think it was less than ten years. They drew that water down. It's not sustainable.
It's not re what do you call it, re.
Recharging.
Charging.
It recharges from the north.
Oh, gosh.
Back on the backside of the uplift, I mean is there like a nice mountain range back there? No, there's nothing. I'm sure that this year is gonna be a good year for recharge, right? But last year.
One in fifty years.
This is the record. Mm-hmm, this is the record, February and January had the highest amounts of precipitation on record.
Really?
For the city of Romans.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah. Yeah, wet, heavy snow.
It seemed to have that everywhere.
No, it was so wet and heavy this morning, shoveling it.
You should see my driveway. It was an adventure.
But anyway.
It was like some kind of adventure I was going on. I couldn't see my road, it was blowing white so hard. And I don't have delineators and so I was driving for about a mile without delineators. And I've got drifts that are as high as this hot, so it was like. Okay, there's a drift about six inches from me and then the the worst part is when you got the blowover areas on the high parts. Cause you just don't know where the road is. And my wife said, I swear that you look like a ping pong ball bouncing around on the road. Yeah, so just like I'm not going to town today, I said, I don't blame you. Cause I couldn't even see the road, I was guessing where it was, I was going by heart, you know?
I was kind of way down here on Cedar this morning and I almost ended up in the left hand lane, you know, I'm coming, I almost ended up there not knowing.
Yeah.
Exactly, cause I I was just trying to follow the ruts. And then I got over there and could see and I thought, oops. Yeah, that's crazy. My in-laws got thirty six inches something Douglas.
Oh, my goodness.
Started out, you know, that was their measurement, turned official or what, but they said thirty six inches.
Our January, right?
Yep.
It's crazy.
So we made the decision today, um we were supposed to go to Laramie for a job fair on Thursday. So tonight we decided we're not gonna. So we'll be Thursday if you need some work, so.
I uh.
Well, that cause it's the criminal justice one, which would be more police officer oriented, but also more competitive.
Yeah, they're pretty close. Tell them to go on my time for the morning, but. We'll meet at nine, so.
Does someone employee come in and meet us first thing in the morning sometime? So if I'm not done with that, I might be a little bit late probably there.
It's alright, yeah.
Be alright.
There's a lot of stuff in there.
It's a good, it's a good presentation. Good put together presentation.
People check out after the third slide though, and they have fifty two slides. Have to bring donuts or something to.
Keep us all. Sugar high?
Sugar high, you know.
Do yoga in between, every third slide we'll do yoga.
Do yoga.
Chop any jacks or something.
Yeah. The tech guy is gonna come next Tuesday.
Is he? He's gonna get out to the door.
I know.
Cameron.
Yeah. I'll have to warn him. Bulletproof vest or something. Shot collar or something, I don't know. Yeah.
An escort.
That's yeah, that's probably. I'll have to call Mike getting the next.
No, then he'll steal it.
I know.
That's true, you won't get past.
A hired hand.
I can't get the other ones to even respond.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Conver converge. I can't get them to respond, so.
We might have four contractors interested or consultants interested, the skaters is the four.
Fantastic. Well, yeah, cause I talked to. I think I probably talked to all four of them then. Cause they called last week.
Are they coming up for a walk through anyhow?
One did already. Um quoting that with him last week.
Okay.
Very good.
One lady was. In Torrenton. And she wanted to come over. And then one lady was from Texas. So the other guy was local and then there was another gentleman. Yeah, so I talked to all of them.
Yeah.
So I just pass.
Yes. Yeah, okay. Yep, very good, it's life is good. So. So much work to do, it's incredible.
Very interesting. So I have wonderful news for Tom.
Really?
So on April eleventh. I have my stress test in Casper. Then I have tickets to a concert in Casper. And guess which one wins? You?
Oh, I.
A concert.
Please concert.
Journey in Toto.
Oh.
So so us old folks are really looking forward to it.
I saw them in concert in Casper.
I've never seen anybody in concert except that one guy. Who was that?
Thomas Redd, Red Aiken?
Yeah.
Red Aiken's how I could deal with that.
It was a couple of years ago at uh Frontier Days, but that was the first concert I'd ever been to.
Journey's good, eh?
I love Journey.
Yeah.
So I've walked into this like almost six months ago.
Yeah, they went outside.
So I'm not gonna be available.
You're all there, aren't you?
Mm.
Oh, no.
That's right, you can have it.
We're not doing now, I know.
But you know, then too, I've got to completely wipe you all out of my brain because before that I have to do my stress test.
Yeah, you don't want hearing any legit stuff before that one.
Yeah, so I've got to work at least after. Go do stress tests. In concert and I'll y'all have you in my heart.
I'm like, you know, sure.
And in my thoughts. But not in my presence.
Well, that'd be good.
Not that I could be of any use anyway, but don't say.
If you wanna.
There's numbers involved, I don't do that. And obviously me has.
If you uh stop in, I'll go over with you.
Well, I'll be here for tomorrow's thing, it's here.
Yeah.
Unless, you know, whether.
Cause I was hoping for snow, huh?
Y'all can call me a Florida whist if you want to, but. The dri- the way my house faces. It drifted, how big was the one in front of the front door when you got there?
Right.
Yeah, it was, well, on you or on me?
Yeah, when I started.
On me.
When I started to drag it down, it was just that.
Yeah, so the drifts in in the front of my house, my driveway and my front door.
Wow.
It's like the mayor, cause he can't get out any of these doors, he had to go into the old window again.
Well.
The entrance, eh?
And plus too, I had to block off my dog door because I got drifts in the kitchen again.
Kitchen.
Because it came through the dog door.
Yeah.
I woke up to a drift in the kitchen. That doesn't do much for your heating though.
No.
Shoveling the kitchen.
Yes, I do, I do.
It rolls wild.
Yes, I actually take a dustpan and scoop it up and toss it in the sink.
She could have made a little snowman.
I actually snow shovel in my in my kitchen.
She could have made a little snowman.
Oh, a kitchen snowman. The preacher.
And then when I opened the sliding door, everything of course went right inside, so I had to shovel that.
I know, I opened the front door just a little bit and um. Jim says, no, you're gonna go through the garage, cause he was cleaning up all the trucking, so I could get to work with him.
Hmm. Yeah, so couple hours. To clear the driveway and the front porch.
Yes, Jim said it was really hard with the snow blower and he did a next door neighbor.
It was really heavy too, it was very wet.
He said it was really hard and we're that's what we're used to, knowing like.
Yeah, because it's not what we're used to here.
No, but um he said even that, he said the um snow blower was really, really working, it was a lot of work, he said.
But he does, yeah, that's how people lose. Back distance and things.
Yeah. Yeah, so Jim did ours and then he did our next door neighbors enough so that they could get out. They needed to.
One surprising thing about snow shovels is that they're good for moving Lego bricks.
Awesome.
Let's do that instead.
So it's.
I'd much rather do that.
Mm-hmm. It's a life hack.
I'd much rather go stepping on them to get to the room.
Oh, those would be.
Just a little bit.
Oh, those are plastic knives.
Yeah, so my day was chasing animals around and cleaning up because if I'm not going outside, they're not going outside. So. We we had to potty the loser.
Oh, Wendy, come up with some good ones.
That's good.
Yes.
So it was a full bucket day.
But they had the fireplace too, so I mean.
They love to fight each other for that spot. I have a gas fireplace, but after it builds up heat, a fan kicks on and actually blows the heat out. And it's a little hearth, it looks like a real fireplace and as soon as that fan kicks on. They start pushing each other right away, trying to get in front of it right now.
Of course they do. That's the best thing about a fireplace, it gets close as possible.
So what songs does Toto sing? I don't I don't know them at all.
Africa is the one.
Okay.
That is like the Toto song.
The 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 group song.
And then they have more, that that's the one like everybody knows.
Rusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say it.
Yes.
Okay.
See, look at that.
I don't know.
Yes.
I know a few from these.
I think that I will be surprised if I cannot sing along with every one of Toto's songs.
Really?
Oh, I bet you can.
Yeah.
They've been around for.
They've been around forever and I I loved them when they were oldies.
It's oldies.
So where in Casper are they having?
At the event center. The Ford Event Center.
Okay, so.
It's it's that building on the hill that you can only see like the the top of it when you drive through, it looks like a big old Pizza Hut, you know?
Yeah, probably.
Oh, okay.
So you go up over that hill and it's actually like goes down into the ground, so only the top section is okay, which is why it looks like a Pizza Hut.
Oh, good, okay.
But the whole thing is built down into the door.
Okay, I've never been up there, okay.
Um that's where they do the concerts, um they did PBR um bull riding.
High school basketball championships.
Yeah, it's it's an actual.
I don't say.
Yeah, then call.
You can put forty cars on the floor, ask me how I know.
I didn't play it in there.
Yeah.
It was home.
Oh, yeah.
Just weren't sure the balls would come back up. I don't know why, it was just weird.
Well, maybe because the day before they had bulls chugging around.
They had a great band. And then it was hard, cause you would you would look at the the basket and there was all sorts of space behind it.
Yeah.
And I wasn't used to that.
That's a three D issue.
Really?
So we we played there one night and then went to Casper College and then I. I could play.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that kind of exhibition area would be tough.
Yeah.
Cause you don't have that wall, normally there's some kind of wall or something.
Yeah, yeah, it was hard, it was just weird, it was hard to get.
But that perception was really weird.
Yeah. Yeah, I struggled.
Yeah, it was weird, we went to this uh exhibit at uh NASA last week and we lived into the seven forty seven that carried the shuttle.
Oh, yeah.
And they must have used only a half inch of like. Probably the cheapest wood for the subfloor in there. And when you would step, you would sink probably an inch.
Cool.
And you know, they've got probably ten thousand people a day going through that thing. It is. And you're up, you know, close to thirty feet, you know, and of cour- of course, everything is contained inside the sub forty seven, it's all stripped out. And they took out all the weight, but then they came in for the exhibit, they put in this floor, it's just like walking on paper.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, it's so much fun though, cause then you get up to the very top of the crude control module there and you know, you're you're like on the fourth or the fifth floor. And you're looking down, it was just. Yeah, okay. Yeah, the deck. Yeah, and it was, it was way up there. It was so cool though.
Which one did you go to?
Uh Johnson Space Center, yeah.
I lived a few miles from Kennedy most of my life, so I've been over there several times.
Wow. Oh, I wish I could go there.
And we would take, we would go outside at school during watches, we would just step outside and watch the launch.
Watch it that, oh, my gosh.
You did, did you see the stuff? you did, did you see the stuff that happened in the eighties?
I was actually sitting in seventh grade science class watching it on the television when it happened.
Okay.
When it happened.
But you didn't see it live on like?
Not outside, no, we were, it was uh implement where I was, so we wouldn't have been able to see it, but we were watching it on TV, seventh grade science class, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
I know exactly where it was.
Yep, and the uh
This thing like that, you won't remember.
The thing that's hard to believe and it gone back and looked at the the black box and whatnot is that they survived the ejection. The ejection ma- module.
The landing didn't do so much for them.
Yep, in the ocean, just hitting the water like that.
Yeah. It's amazing how um hard water surfaces can be.
And see, I was in New England because and that was the teacher, she was New Hampshire, she was in New Hampshire and that was like
Christine McCall.
McCall and they have a museum and things like that, history, not history, but science. But um yeah, that was.
Every generation has their thing.
Mm-hmm. That was a
That's my thing.
That was a very big, big thing in because
It was the first time we were putting a civilian in space and it was a teacher who won this whole competition.
Yes. Tition and she um wasn't very far from where I because I live right on the border of Maine, New Hampshire and it was, yeah. Christine McCall, yeah, it was amazing, yes.
And that was back when we were, the space race was still a thing.
She was a thing.
We didn't just abandon everything for several years, it was
No, so. But.
It was hot and and moving.
Yeah, and that was the last time they ever put a civilian
Until William Shatner.
He's been all over up there, isn't he?
No, seriously, he got to go up.
Oh, did he?
He did, he paid the money.
He finally got to go up and see space.
Oh.
After being the captain of a starship for so long.
But I know.
Yes, we really have with William Shatner's.
But yeah, 'cause that was it was really something and then all the news, it was just we had a lot, we had news people and stuff.
Yeah, for my home it was JFK, for me it was Challenger.
Yeah, and it was nine eleven.
And my son was nine eleven.
Yeah. But uh I remember telling, asking somebody, 'cause I worked at the bank and I didn't, we didn't have the TV anymore. And we weren't able to go online and I was like, can't they just land on top of it? And they were like, yeah. It's you're you cannot, and I was like, okay.
Um, I was
But Maine is the place where they they Portland, Maine, right forty five minutes north of where I left.
Yeah.
And that's where they they took the airport and they went from there and then they took the plane, so yes.
Yeah. I was at the University of Florida. I had gone into my job between classes in the library. And somebody, we didn't have a TV like for everybody, but one of the guys in the back had one and he's like, did you hear about this? And I said, well, some air traffic controller's gonna lose his job. You know, not realizing that it was on purpose.
No, right. Yeah.
And you know, my first reaction was that air traffic controller's in big trouble. And then the second one and it came out and I was like
Yes. Yeah.
Leaving campus. Not touching my uniform for a few months. To get my son up from school, hoping I don't get deployed.
There was a gentleman in our church and his brother was actually working and it was a long couple days, we were praying and he did, he he wasn't injured, but because they shut the phones and things all down, it was like that.
Yeah, he couldn't find people, yeah.
No. Nope, couldn't find anything, but um.
No, all of the ROTC programs, 'cause I was active duty even while I was in school, so ROTC ROTC programs, everybody was sent off campus. We did not wear uniforms on the campus for like months after that.
No.
We wouldn't meet in gagos. It's, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We kinda went into a meeting for a while, 'cause we didn't know what was behind it or what was next, you know.
Wow. No. No.
And thankfully not when
I know.
I didn't get called up to go back out.
Wow. But.
We
No.
Yeah, I pulled my my son was in kindergarten.
Yeah, I was gonna say our daughter.
I closed him out of school, went home and we discussed in kindergarten language.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
You know, what happened, some bad people did some bad things and now
Yeah. We just put the TV off, we had the TV off and I remember Danielle wanting and I was like, no. We just sat around looking at our table and like you.
No, there have been a couple movies since then that I absolutely refuse to watch, dude. But it's it's based on and and stuff like that, I mean, I just I I honestly haven't been able to watch it, even the happy ending stories because when you live through it, you know there's no happy ending, so I've never been able to watch those, I just
No.
And when I say go, my service is guaranteed for the next few years.
Mm-hmm. No. Mm-hmm, us living so close to New York, I mean, it was just crazy.
Yeah, try to explain to the kindergarten why everybody is all freaking out.
Yeah.
I know. I know.
We didn't keep anything from them, but trying to figure out how to dumb it down, that was hard, you know. Um step to the loading dock, somebody come grab me if they come back first.
Sure.
True.
Just gonna move on out.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's really hard finding out that your childhood friends were were killed, you know, by like an IED or something like that and finding it on the TV. Like that was the guy that he used to hang out with down the street when I was a little kid. And seeing that on the U is so hard.
It's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough.
I'm sure everybody has lost somebody, doesn't love that.
Yeah. You know, we lost a couple friends during the war, the Iraq War. I pulled it in. You wanna watch an awesome movie? Uh Taking Chance.
Yeah.
Taking Chance, it's Kevin Bacon.
Yeah.
And it's a it's a whole interesting story, so he he went to pick up a a soldier that uh died in Iraq and that he was gonna do the transport.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
You know how they
Yeah.
that they they do the
Mm-hmm. Yes.
The transport and they found out that the kid was gonna be buried at DuBois, Wyoming.
Oh, my.
And he went, it was on the list or something, he was getting tired of his job or something, so he volunteered to to take chance back to DuBois, and so he was on the plane with him.
DuBois. Oh, wow.
It it's almost a documentary type thing, but it actually happened and so when we went through DuBois, we stopped at the cemetery and we found where he was buried.
Yeah. Okay. Did you really?
Taking Chance, yeah, he's actually buried there in DuBois.
Oh, well, 'cause we went up um September.
Can't remember his last name, but
Oh.
but it was him bringing Chance back home and then he met the parents.
Did it.
Yeah.
Great movie though.
Mm, I'll have to look that up.
It's
Taking Chance and
Incredible.
Yeah.
Yeah, he uh liked DuBois so much that he uh I heard he bought a house.
Kevin Bacon.
Kevin Bacon bought a house and
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
in the summer he has a band that goes down.
Does he?
Like in the park and we play in the bands, so
Cool.
he's not there a lot, but
No, but still.
but he he really fell in love with DuBois.
Oh, whoops. Wow.
I'm gonna go ahead and send out another doodle poll for uh me
Good.
for Casey Herliss with CDBG
Yeah.
to get that reading back together maybe for next week, just to check schedules and stuff, the doodle poll.
Yeah, if you want me, I'm only here two days.
Okay.
My name Tuesday.
Okay.
The rest of the week I'm gone.
Well, let's get out.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, yes.
So it's good doing the land and stuff.
Yes, there's a lot of good things on talking about the liquor licenses, switching out those to new licenses, um retention, 'cause they're gonna have some companies about scanning documents and things, so I really wanna see what they're using.
Yeah.
Um
Oh, good.
There's a couple others that I really I'm looking forward to, so
Good.
I'll need a job.
Was it at Casper, the college or?
Yeah, we s- I have a hotel outside of the college.
Okay.
So I'll, I checked with Lou before and he said just let remind him when he gets closer and he will let me have the vehicle, so I
Yeah.
Would you take it that one on drive if you could take it?
No.
Off your flight seriously?
I used
Uh, no, seriously, don't don't think twice.
Okay.
Don't think twice, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Drive my truck in for a while.
Okay. 'Cause I will be here Wednesday, I have to leave at ten, it starts at twelve, so I can come in and just kinda, I can't go to the department head meeting, but that's why I need everybody to have everything on the, you know, so I'll remind them tomorrow.
Next week. Or it could be a long meeting. I don't know.
I hope not, yeah. There's a lot already for placeholders.
I know, we've got two or three that'll have to be.
That's okay, he's got a couple I spoke to him about, so he needs to figure out what needs to be done.
Get my acting gear.
Yes. I don't want a vacation anymore. Um, and I didn't I didn't move Wendy's and I was because I thought the other one was gonna pass and I moved it and then I had to delete it, the one day, so this time I didn't do it.
That's easy, though, just throwing it over in public hearings and
Yes. Yeah, I could do the, yeah, I could do a public hearing and I'll do uh then the first reading
That's
about the other one, if they're gonna have it, I don't know, but it's a placeholder right now.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either.
No, I know you don't know. So but I
I work on the budget.
You said not till May, so I moved that out to May.
Yeah, I can see that, I gotta get on that.
Yeah. I don't know what you do with all your time, kind of play tic-tac-toe or something in there.
This weekend's taxes week.
I haven't done my taxes.
Got mine, I gotta have my brother, but my daughters, my sons.
I haven't done mine, I gotta do ours probably tomorrow night. I don't wanna it's kinda funny, our daughter's birthday is April fifteenth and I I I'm not kidding, I swear, and um I hate doing taxes and I always would wait till last minute, in Maine, they have a holiday, it's only a Maine and Massachusetts holiday and it it's Patriots Day, it's before the um but anyways, so they always would move Maine taxes due, they would move it out and I would always wait and I would get money back, I just hate doing taxes and I, you know, 'cause I never did the program, I always did like long, you know, books. And so our daughter would say, when did you really do the taxes the year I was born? I was like, I don't even remember, I don't remember. But um, no, she was born on tax day. And the day Titanic sank, April fifteenth.
That's true, that was tax day.
My ship pulled into the same berth in Southampton, England that the Titanic set sail from.
No way.
And sailors are just a little bit superstitious.
Yes.
We were not happy campers.
Did you get a little bit of a sinking feeling?
Yeah. They um, the piece they brought up from Titanic, they called it the big piece, it was a piece of metal and they had it set in New Jersey at a um casino, so we took, we went camping in New Jersey and we went to the casino, we had to go through it, had to be careful 'cause she was her age, but we went and we saw the big piece and all this other 'cause she actually liked the real boat, about she had all this stuff.
Did you see they just found a camera in Titanic that had pictures that were seriously hadn't been developed?
Wow.
Really?
It it was
I've never thought that. I had neither.
It was on the internet, now maybe they were spooking them, but they looked real.
That's true. Really, that's amazing.
They looked real.
They had rows in the picture?
I didn't see rows in the drawing.
She was in the drawing though.
Of course, um but no, Danielle actually has some coal, the real coal from Titanic, they used to sell it, but anyways, yeah. No, seriously, no, but yeah.
So have you uh made the purchase on the five gallon drum of fluff yet?
No, I have not, I have
It's only fifty bucks.
Which I own for
It's probably not as good as everything.
If it's fluff, it's it's the same thing for Massachusetts.
Commercial grade fluff.
I don't know, I mean, whoopee pies are not the same when you're not in the Northeast, it
I know. They never heard of
It's the same stuff.
They don't, no, it's not, fluff and um cream here, I've had two jars of one of each and they're very different, it does a
No, it's not.
And nobody ever heard of whoopee pies here, they're mukpies or something, I don't
That that they're not even the same thing.
No, they're not, no.
Whoopee pies are more like cake and whipped cream than they are
They are. Yes.
cookies.
That's something, my mom used to make whoopee pies when we used to go camping. They're amazing, I love whoopee pie. No, I'm actually, my
My three favorite things from the Northeast is whoopee pies
Yep.
blueberries straight off the bush.
In Maine, blueberry, yes, because they are very good.
And lobster rolls.
What's the last one?
Lobster rolls.
Lester rolls.
Oh.
Street, you you go to a shack right on the beach as the
You go to
I did that once.
Yes.
The the boats are coming in, unloading it and they just right there, street fresh.
You know, I told you about they built a brick and mortar from the bottom up, a um red lobster. And it went out of business because first of all, it's not fresh, it's all frozen, it's from other places, it's not even from the Northeast or anything like that, and I'm thinking you guys did not do your homework, because all the sea, all the places out there, all the restaurants, they just go down to Boston or they go down to New Hampshire and they get the boats and they buy it fresh right there and then they make it. Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's good, seafood is so good.
And same thing in Florida and Key West, Key West, you can get everything right there, including an elevator, believe me.
Ugh.
Really?
It Gator Tail is actually very good.
Oh, no.
Um
I tell you about red fish in Texas is pretty good too.
Yeah, but up in up in central Florida, you on either coast, the shrimp are unbelievable, they are rock shrimp that are like this.
Red fish.
Yeah. Oh. You see, they're bigger than the the ones in New England.
Yeah, the ones down south are a lot bigger, but yeah, you go to a place you go to a place anywhere else and they have shrimp and it's
Yeah. No, so, but my sister is coming from Maine for a visit, my sister, my brother, my brother.
When is she coming?
Texas.
Next month. So I'm gonna have her
Shouldn't they wait after the blizzards at all or?
I don't know, she knows what the temperature was today, she was not happy.
Might stay that way next month.
She doesn't want any snow here. I was like, no, she doesn't wanna come, I said, you come here, would you welcome me?
I remember shoveling snow off the deck and yard on Memorial Day to try to clean up yard. Yeah.
Wipe some? Okay. I can't, dirt is here, it goes. Yeah, I'm not gonna buy it.
Yeah, damn, got side back here.
So is there school tomorrow or not?
Yes.
Oh, I got the call.
I got the call during the meeting.
That's what I was, I didn't look at email yet. I just ignored the call.
Yeah, I checked the email.
That's why I was at, I figured maybe you checked it or something, so.
So how late do I have to be before you use that bet?
And who'd you bet with?
I didn't bet, Mike asked me what time.
Oh.
I thought.
Okay.
She's getting good at it.
All right. Councilman Weisender.
I moved to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at nine twenty-three PM.
Second.
There's been um, motion maiden seconded to come out of executive session at nine twenty-three PM. Uh, any discussion? Hey, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, motion passes with six yeas.
All right, was there um anything discussed in uh, any objections to matters discussed in executive session? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, uh which is uh passing of minutes, I guess.
Yeah, those were.
Okay, jeez, I'm sorry. So I would entertain a motion, uh Vice Mayor Sanger.
A move that we approve the executive session minutes for February seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting, March second, twenty twenty-three, special council meeting.
Sorry, point of order, we cannot do all at once, we have to do individually.
Because of various people weren't here.
I understand. Yes.
So you're gonna break these apart for me?
All right, so let me um.
You want me to just read them and then you can break them as we go?
I think that'd be okay.
Okay, um, I move that we uh approve the executive session minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Been a motion maiden seconded to approve the executive session minute of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
You're gonna have to hold on one second.
Seeing none, we'll hold on. You know, that is one thing.
That's it, yeah.
We'll have to make a, what's the word for it?
Lewis.
No, a, a fl- a chart, um.
So?
Well, and it, a, a chart that tells us who.
Who was where.
Who was here and who wasn't, all that, it was an aggregate or whatever.
Someone done that for us.
It's been done.
It's been done.
Yeah, what, what did you call it, Wendy?
I called it a cheat sheet.
We're gonna need a cheat sheet, technical term.
Okay, so we're doing February seventh, so online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with four yeas and two abstain. The four yeas were Mayor Wycom, Vice Mayor Sanger, Councilmember Lehman and Councilmember Weisenberg that abstained, was Councilmember Wells and Councilmember Seeloff.
All right, thank you. Uh, Vice, Vice Mayor Wells?
Got it.
Uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wells.
Whoa.
Councilwoman Wells, I'm sorry, I'll get it right, it'll take me six months, but I'll get it.
Oh wow.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of March second, twenty twenty-three, special coun- council meeting.
No, it's regular.
No, regular council meeting, March second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Regular council meeting.
Regular counseling meeting, March second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
There'd been a motion maiden seconded uh to.
You, you were correct, sorry, point of order, she was correct on the first statement of a special council meeting.
Approved.
Yeah.
Okay, March second, twenty twenty-three, special council meeting.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. Um, there's been a motion maiden seconded to approve the minutes from uh March uh second, twenty twenty-three, which is a special council meeting.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
There, 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 to there. Hate me.
Oh, we're all waiting.
I forgot.
Online voting is open.
Yeah.
Now it'll pop up.
Oh, there it is.
You just gotta stop being impatient.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five yeas and one abstain, the one abstain was Councilmember Weisenberg.
All right, um. Councilman Weisenberg.
Move to approve March seventh, twenty twenty-three, regulars council meeting.
Second.
May motion maiden seconded to approve the March seventh, twenty twenty-three, uh regular council meeting minutes as presented, I take it? Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting. I don't know if he's trying to get my attention or.
Yeah, we gotta get out of here.
Being funny, yeah.
Almost nine thirty.
Take, take your time, Lynn, take your time.
That's our. Take your time, nine thirty-one works for us all.
Take at least five more minutes.
It's funny, cause we used to just be like. Text a lot of fun.
Start, start a poll and end up with a.
Oh, he had that going.
We did.
I know, we did. Okay, online voting is open.
It's pretty sad, huh?
You guys are easily entertained.
Yep.
It was our last.
You can tell who has kids and who don't.
That's our last meeting?
Yes. Oh, there it is.
No, this was.
I didn't touch it.
Two meetings.
Two meetings.
You got, you guys got me confused, that's really.
Can we, can we have a cheat sheet when we have this happen again, please?
Yes, yes.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Uh. Is there no further business needed, come to the floor? Okay, we will adjourn this meeting noting that the next meeting is gonna be on the uh April eleventh, then April eighteenth and April nineteenth. So uh. Good night and it's adjourned, everybody have a good night.
Oh, yes. Oh, God.
Do you know Bruce, when I first started, they're all looking and they're all like at nine thirty-one and I'm looking at the clock on the back wall and I'm like, what in the world? They're like, there's a clock.
That's exactly what he said to me. I see that, see what?
How you guys see that?
Board.
The old clock, I don't even know if it's right.
Said I was sitting up there and I'm sitting up, like I say, I was looking at that little round clock back there and tried to figure out, what the hell? Time is it?
Yeah, yeah.
And on, and it was wild before, they said, there's a clock up there.
Well, every time I looked at it, it's the same and I'm like, how are you guys doing that? And they're like.